And when I go to fence, I am not going to be looking at, you know, any kind of residential fencing scenarios. For example, right now, I have an eight to 10-foot fence. It keeps the deer out of my garden. I'm in complete violation of the fencing scenario. Sue me. So what I'm saying here is that we have a lot of these things in place that make perfect sense if you're in a residential area with lots of houses and it's all high density. Makes no sense if you're living in agriculture area. That's six?
Can I offer him my three minutes?
Thank you, I'll take that.
Pat, or I'll ask a lot of questions.
There's no proposed zoning map on the county website. I can't verify any of this because there's no current 2025 map. Now, there's another issue. We've been trying to bring this to the attention of the commission, this commission, County Commission, Planning and Zoning Administrator. There is a big difference between urban and rural. Okay? We did a study on this. We did a survey on this. Urban means you have sidewalks and paved roads and houses are close together and you have services and traffic lights and churches and schools. That's urban, doesn't matter what the population is. Rural is not that. Pretty simple. But what the pushback we've been getting from the county on this is it's like their definition, they have two definitions. It's either urban or it's not urban yet. And I think that's problematic for what we're trying to do. With this, if you look at the zoning ordinance, it says, "The R-zone is a zone wherein residential uses are prioritized over all of the uses." Residential uses or neighborhoods are not a priority in LaSalle or Eastland or agricultural land or the houses on Mailbox Road. Thus, Section 2 doesn't even apply to what we're trying to do here. People who live in these areas cannot separate their natural rural homesteading lifestyle from the priority of a home. In their mind, it's all the same thing. Their home is their garden and their animals and everything else. It's a very different thing. It's not residential. You can have a dwelling in agricultural right now. You don't need residential in unincorporated county. We've been saying this for six months and we're not being heard. I don't know if we'll be heard tonight, but it is on record. And I have so much more, but I'm not going to cover it tonight. Thanks.
Thanks, Shannon.
Colby.
You don't get six minutes. You can't build.
I can't draw on other people's. In my homework, by the way, I got the biography of Loves.
Colby Smith from Northern San Juan County. I know you guys are frustrated by the fact that the Loves case keeps coming back to you, but there's a reason for that. And that is that you keep trying, I think, to stick a square peg inside of a round hole. It just isn't enough to look at the ways an automobile service station and a truck stop are alike or the fact that more parking for cars is provided than parking for trucks, as the county attorney said in his memo. You have to look, you have to consider and make specific findings of fact based on substantial evidence that the obvious differences between a truck stop and an automobile service station should make no difference in your analysis. Over the past six years, members of the community have come before you to highlight the differences that exist. Truck stops create more air quality problems than automobile service stations. A scientist from the University of Utah sent you a letter explaining that. A world-renowned doctor, someone who's been, a movie's been made about her, who lives nearby, explained to you that diesel fumes create problems for children. You've never addressed any of those issues in your deliberations. Truck stops also create more noise than automobile service stations. Excuse me. They create greater risks of pollution in nearby Pat Creek, you heard about that from Dave today. Truck stops also impact traffic in the area in ways that will cause accidents that could cost lives. Truck stops depress property values nearby. They've already disrupted property sales that we know of and they've depressed property prices. As long as you keep not addressing those issues, your work won't be complete and the courts will keep sending the case back to you. You have the power to ask Loves a lot of questions. You can ask them to do an air quality study. You can ask them to perform a noise analysis for the truck stop. You can ask them what would happen if there was a fuel spill and some of it got into Pat Creek. You could ask them to do a traffic study, to work with UDOT to figure out what's the impact on traffic patterns going to be in the area and what do they need to do to make the road work there and stop accidents? But you haven't done any of those things. And until you do, you won't have the substantial evidence in front of you to finally decide the issues in the case. And finally, I think it's worth noting, the book, that even Loves knows the difference between an automobile service station and a truck stop. From 1964, when the company was founded, until 1980, Loves built 100 or bought 100 gas stations. No truck stops. They never opened a truck stop until 1980. I'll finish quickly. When they opened their first travel stop, that's what they call truck stops, country stores are their gas stations. They didn't let truckers park there. They only let them start parking there years later when they acquired another company that allowed that. So you should ask Loves to tell you what's the difference between a country store and a travel stop? And you should ask them to tell you originally why they didn't allow trucks to park overnight. Thank you.
Hi, everybody. Susan Carter. I live on Luna Circle, which is in a home that's 1,000 feet within the emissions circle of Loves truck stop as proposed. You've been presented with research by the National Institute of Health, the Federal Department of Transportation, local studies on our wind patterns, studies by state and local law enforcement, and more that document the adverse impact that diesel truck stops have upon the health and safety of communities. You've received petitions and testimony from numerous residents and they fear for negative impacts of a 24-hour day noise, diesel particulates drifting on the wind, wind-strewn garbage, increased demand for what is very little law enforcement capability in the North County and the irrevocable loss of our residential sense of community. The proposed property to this truck stop is budded directly up against a residential community. Our existing commercial businesses that buffer us from the highway are mainly quiet, non-24-hour-day operations without any strong retail presence. A diesel truck stop is the opposite of this and is incongruent with both existing businesses as well as our community. I have to admit my frustration and despair over the process we were engaged in and feel it has been quite opaque to our community. Letters by myself and others have asked you to address how you will create your decision criteria, what conditions you might place in a conditional approval. Indeed, even how many trucks? Is it 53 or 95? And what design is being considered? It's really difficult to add any further testimony or ask for any further community input with such fundamental questions remain unanswered. A judge asked you to go back and reconsider your original decision and take into account whether or not a diesel truck stop with a 53 to 95 proposed truck parking spaces is in harmony with our existing community. Whether or not you factor in the personal opinions of the community, it's your choosing. But I stand here tonight imploring you, please, open your minds and hearts to the facts and the studies you've been presented with. Please weigh the harms diesel at this magnitude can wreck on our elders and our children. Please consider the permanent economic damage of destroying an existing residential community, one that could be built upon and produce much-needed housing and stable taxes otherwise. If approved, Loves will become the anchor point for further strip mall development and highway blight and our community will devolve rather than grow. The decision is yours. I truly hope you will be a good steward to our community and look after our well-being. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Zola Hunt. I'm from Blanding, Utah. I live in the rural area. The philosophical differences of rural versus urban. Urban areas are not defined only by their population base but by a number of factors, not the least being the existence of residential housing or neighborhoods, public utilities, and commercial services. When different areas are compared to each other, a residential area is a land use in which housing predominates as opposed to industrial, commercial, or agricultural areas. Residential is considered urban. If land in towns and cities is used for high-density housing, commercial areas, storefronts, a variety of services, schools and churches, and house paved streets and sidewalks, et cetera, it is considered urban by any stretch of the imagination. I have been told that all of San Juan County is considered rural. A number of different authoritative sources consider that to be nonsense. In the state of Utah, there are clear areas of rural use, agricultural, and clear areas of urban use, towns and cities. On page 76 of the 2025 LUDMO, it states, "The R-zone is a zone wherein residential uses are prioritized over all other uses. Any transential use or accessory building in the zone is scrutinized against the zone's primary purpose for residential dwellings. Residential uses of neighborhoods are not the priority in LaSalle, Eastland, agricultural land, or even the few homes dispersed on Mailbox Road. In fact, there is no land in an unincorporated San Juan County that fits this residential zone definition. Residential zoning belongs to incorporated towns and cities and has no place in agricultural areas. Please maintain San Juan County as the agricultural center it is. Fulfill the will of the people." Thank you.
Thanks. I'm Jennifer Widensey. I live on Sunny Acres Lane and I don't have anything written down, so I'm probably going to sound like I'm rambling. And I probably am. But the one thing that kept coming into my mind as I was driving here was in the discussion of the whole Loves travel stop thing, have, and I don't know who to go with with this because you're the planning commission. You deal with what is presented to you and I don't know that you can look at anything else. I don't know who talks to Sitla or if Sitla talks to the Loves Corporation or how that whole triangle works. But has anybody discussed if there are alternatives? Like, we could save a lot of heartache. It's obvious where that 13-acre area is right up against, adjacent to, a residential neighborhood. And you can call it mixed use if you want to change the ordinance, but everybody knows it's a residential neighborhood. It has been for decades. People have been paying taxes there for decades. It's a residential neighborhood. Can't we just put it somewhere else in the valley? Like, a few miles south on the highway? There's still commercial, zoned commercial area that doesn't have adjacent residences yet. And if somebody wants to build a residence next to a Loves travel stop in the future or be able to walk down the street to get a quart of milk, they can do that. But you're not, we wouldn't be imposing it on those of us who already live there, who established our homes there because of what they were. And I don't understand how this one neighborhood, our neighborhood and the adjacent neighborhoods should have to carry the burden of the impacts of this big thing that's being built when we could just put it somewhere where people can make that decision if that's what they want. And I don't know who gets to say that. If that's just a Sitla thing and Sitla says, "Well, it's our property, we choose what we want to sell." Do we have any leverage at all as a community to stand up and say, "Hey, we got this really good thing of value and we really want to plan this well. We want to do the right thing here." Rather than accepting what's being handed to us by the first energy that walks into the door with a buck in their pocket, can't we just, like, do we get any say? Can we, is there any way to even cordially talk with Loves and say, "Hey, you know, this is a thing that's not working for our people, for our community, for our greater extended community of towns and neighborhoods here. This is really causing a lot of heartache. Would you consider going down the road a bit?" I don't think, I can't imagine that it would make that much of a big difference for Loves' bottom line as it would be for, say, my neighbor down the road who's going to have her home that she's been in decades and her home life completely altered. She has invested everything into that and as I have in my place. I don't have anything else. This is my home. I've invested everything into this home. For Loves, this is like a tiny thing that they don't even care. They just throw some lawyers at it and wait for you. Anyway, I would like some answers on that. Has it been considered? If not, who can? How do we do that? Thanks.
Hello, I'm Madeline Bills. I'm talking about the scenario of agriculture should include homesteading. This is, pardon? What was your name? Madeline Bills. And what area are you representing? Blanding. Yeah, sorry. This discussion is about land use in the unincorporated area of San Juan County. Residential zoning should not exist outside of incorporated towns or cities. Chapter 9B of the proposed 2025 land use ordinance states, "The AG Zone is a zone wherein agriculture and rural uses are prioritized over all of the uses." Based on a recent survey conducted by PACC, there is a lot of interest in San Juan County for homesteading, but there is no provision in the AG Zone for the concept of homesteading. Homesteading is a land use concept of engaging in private agricultural for self-sufficiency, whether or not what is produced is used commercially beyond the needs of the household. As residential refers to higher-population-density scenarios of towns and cities, all current residential areas in the unincorporated San Juan County should be changed to the agricultural zone and the agricultural zone should be updated to include the intent to develop private land and improve its production capacity as well as potentially develop family business, manufacture, and industry on a small scale that does not detract from the agricultural nature or the natural habitat of the land. This would update the AG Zone to accommodate families who want to exercise their ineligible rights of life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. This would allow families to become more independent and use their own land to provide a majority of their own food needs and have a positive impact on local food security. Thank you.
Hello. My name is Steve Goodman. I live in unincorporated Monticello. My wife couldn't be here tonight, but I promised her that I would behave and not get frustrated. But I do want to say a couple of things. You know, Shannon mentioned earlier that this process seems to be going pretty fast. I think, I agree. But I also think fast can be good if we're doing fast in a good way. Our group and a lot of citizens and a lot of people have sat with the commissioners and staff offering to help to write the ordinances and the plans and work with you guys based on all of the work that we've done on the back end as far as what unincorporated San Juan wants. And again, I want to keep pushing that because unincorporated is what we're talking about. We're not talking about the towns, correct? So, you know, I think everybody's eager to get this done and we can do it quickly if we all do it right. As I mentioned, you know, our group, myself personally, along with the group, we've met with hundreds of families and people in unincorporated San Juan. We've met with some of you. We've met with the commissioners. We've had meetings with staff. And it's just, we keep getting up here and giving you guys logic and facts and reasons and the whys to all of this stuff and it doesn't seem to be getting anywhere. So I want to appeal to just the common sense of this a little bit. The citizens clearly don't like this plan and this ordinance. You guys seemingly, I think, all have agreed that, at least understanding that we don't like it. I know the commissioners have heard us and know that we don't like it. So I genuinely want to know, without being rude or combative, why? Why is there so much pushback? I just simply don't understand. I can't comprehend it and I'm trying to not let my brain conspirize what those things could be, but it's very easy to go down that road and I think that that's starting to happen. We have folks on staff and on the commission boards that are agreeing with what we're saying, but they're not standing up for us. This has been going on six to nine months. We keep hearing things are going to change on the website. Things don't change on the website. We're trying to defend you guys in our town hall meetings. Now, it takes time because of certain acts and laws and all that stuff. The people are coming back and looking. The things that are being promised that are going to be changed are not being changed. So I don't, you're hearing us, but you're not standing up for us. And then there's a group of people, staff, commissioners, whatever, that are refusing to hear us and disagree with us. And they're getting in the way. You guys are supposed to be speaking on our behalf. The commissioners are supposed to be speaking on our behalf. I just don't understand. I literally don't understand. Nine months into this, things are not moving forward. Things are not progressing and there's people that are just like, "We got to get it done. We got to get it done." You're going to end up passing something that nobody in your county wants and you're going to eventually have to go back and do it all again anyway. So let's do it right. Please stand up for us. Please listen to us. Or at the very least, tell us what the heck is going on, really, behind the scenes that is not helping the citizens. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Greg Colberth. I live in Elk Meadows. And unfortunately, I have been where you are now. I worked for a water and sanitation district and they said, "Greg, we need new rules and regulations." And they said, "Our attorney will send you something." And so we got some boilerplate stuff from another water and sanitation district that was kind of similar to ours in some respects, but a lot closer to municipal districts where they got their rules and regs from. And it really didn't work that well. So I did a little research, found three or four other sets of rules and regulations and started going through those. And before very long, the only thing that really made sense was to stop and take each line, or not line particularly, but each item, one at a time and say, "What is the function of this? And what are the problems with what I have written before me?" You know, in these five, I think, I had different rules, sets of rules and regulations. And so I talked to my board of directors and said, "Here's the problem. There's a lot of stuff here to cover and I don't think it's right for me to just say, 'Okay, here's how we'll do it,' because other people have opinions and may see things that I don't see." So we took a chunk, line one to line 45, and said, "Let's go through this and write what you think the function of each item is and what's wrong with it, what's right with it, what's trying to get to." And it doesn't have to be a huge volume, just a couple of words, you know? Question mark, definition. A lot of problems with definitions. I mean, shall and may are not interchangeable. And I've had several long discussions about those two words, about what the difference is. There are a lot of differences. For example, when we've, way back, Kristen, when we had the workshop at the Hydeaway, the shop was a problem. Well, a shop near a municipality or near a metropolitan area is a whole different program than a shop on a farm. It's a whole different concept. And when you say you can't have a shop, well, you know, I can think of an awful lot of people out there going to say, "Oh, really? You know, come and get it. You know, take it away." But, and good luck with that, too. But I keep in mind, I know that. But it's things like that that are the problem. So the speediest resolution is to incorporate a system similar to that, whatever you choose, and say, "We're going to work on this many, these items here. Does the public have any input on the lines in there? Take the input, fold it in with what you think that it's supposed to do and what the public thinks it's supposed to do." Because, I mean, Kristen works for you guys. The attorney works for you guys. You guys work for us. But we, the reason that you're elected and appointed and sitting there is because none of us want to be. And I never want to be again. I did that, not going back. I'm retired and that means especially that. So there you go. There's a nickel's worth.
My name's Pat Cadenhead. I live here in Monticello. We've been here three years. We have lived from one end of the country to the other with a number of places in between. We have moved into two towns like Monticello with a single stoplight in the whole town. And we've seen them grow to over 100,000 people. But they also were on interstate freeways. So I have no expectation that this town will ever see that. Under those circumstances, I don't know why it seems that there's plans afoot to plan as if it is. We've watched, we've watched regulation ruin towns. We've watched policies ruin things. We lived in Southern California for a while and I don't want to get into all the debate about immigrants, but there was a large amount of immigrants there, gangs, infestations. And they wound up having to shut down a regional trauma hospital because they ran out of business. You know, they had to take care of so many gang members that had been shot and had no insurance that it drove a regional trauma hospital out of business. I don't want to see that kind of things happen here. We're here for the rest of our lives, I guess. Two adages kind of come to mind. If it isn't broke, don't fix it. And I don't, I don't see what's broken here as far as regulations going into the county. And I've forgotten the other one. But thank you for your time.
Thanks, Pat.
Hi, my name is Alicia LaFever and I live in Pat Creek. And thank you for letting me speak. And it's very nice to meet all of you. And I just, I sent some emails just recently to Kristen about these two issues. The first one I will address is the zoning. And I just ask you to refer to the emails. And I just ask that you put a human element to these issues and try to put yourselves in our shoes and see how the issues relate that way. And in Pat Creek, right now, we have two areas. One is a tin cabin area and it's called The Ranch. And they do nightly rentals and they've done it for decades. The other, the majority of the community, are residences. And we do not do nightly rentals. Our covenant- rentals, our covenants will not allow it, that's why we bought there. And I used to live in Moab since nineteen ninety-eight, and I had to leave because of the disruption from the nightly rentals there. So I personally know the impacts, the negative impacts of nightly rentals. And I just ask that you please do not spot-zone our community, and don't divide it, other than what it's divided now, with the recreational support for The Ranch, so they can do nightly rentals, and then everyone else be residential. And Kristen graciously met with our community, thank you very much for doing that, and you said that you would go with the majority, what the majority went with, and eighty-two percent of the residences outside The Ranch want residential. Well, that's a majority. So I just ask that you please respect our wishes, and it'll be devastating to me and a lot of my neighbors if you allow nightly rentals. So thank you for that. And for the truck stop, I have lived in Moab a long time, and I've been to many truck stops, many Love's travel stops, and I, I know what they are, and I can't imagine being twenty-five feet away from them in a house with fifty-three trucks idling twenty-four hours a day. I, I would go insane. I, I just can't imagine that. And the diesel fumes are a proven carcinogen that would endanger people's health and shorten their lives. It's not a good location, as others have said, and why this issue keeps coming back is because it's not a good location. Sitla owns tons of land, they could, they could sell them some other parcel down the road that's not in the backyard of all these residences. It also brings truck stops, unfortunately, just the nature of truck stops and truckers overnight bring in unwanted elements, prostitution, drugs, crime. So please don't endanger our health and our welfare. And night skies are a big business in Moab, and in Monticello, and Blanding, and everywhere. We've got wonderful night skies, and they're gonna have all these lights, and it will destroy the night skies. Well, people stay overnight, they eat in restaurants, they buy things in stores. It's a lot of money that these people who come there for good, dark night skies, and, and this will degrade our night skies. And the zoning says automobile service stations are allowed, time's up? Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
I'm here to speak to you, I'm Wesley Hunt from Blanding. I'm here to speak to you against my better judgment, because I take my freedom seriously. I take the war in heaven seriously. It was for freedom. What these people are talking about, I wouldn't want a truck stop in my backyard, but I don't want my freedom taken away from where I live. I don't live in an area like that. I've worked my whole life, I'm still working. I've sacrificed for what I have and what I love, and that's freedom. And I can't believe that we're allowing it to be taken away, because certain people who think they are representing us choose not to do so. I'm looking at you. I appreciate what you do, but I hope you will think seriously. I told Kristen when I first learned about this, and I hate confrontation, I stay as far away from it as I possibly can, but I said, the people in the northern part of the county have a different situation than we have in the southern and the more remote counties. Why try and shove us all into one boot? Sylvia said, let's take care of the problem that we need to take care of, let's not try and take care of what doesn't need to be taken care of. Why can't we listen? Thank you.
Okay, let's keep our comments non-personal.
I'd like to have you enter that into the record. This, this is a solution. You've heard a lot about the problems, but I'd like you to consider, Lynn Martin, I live in Elk Meadows. Agriculture protection areas in Utah are part of the general plan. If you go to what an agricultural protection area is, an APA, go to page thirty-two and thirty-three of the general plan, and you will be able to read about it. The sheet that you have is what, where I'm gonna take all this from. An agricultural protection area, an APA, is a designated geographical area created under specific legal statutes to protect agricultural activities. These areas are granted particular legal protections as defined in Utah Code Title Seventeen, Chapter Forty-One, which aims to support the continuity development and viability of agriculture in Utah. The creation of an APA is voluntary and initiated by landowners engaged in agricultural production who seek to safeguard their operations under potential restrictive regulations and other hindrances. If you take a look down under the benefits of an APA, number one, protection from nuisance lawsuits, number two, zoning stability, three, protection from unreasonable restrictions, number four, eminent domain limitations, number five, state development project restrictions, and six, disclosure from new developments. Who can apply? Landowners with agricultural operations can apply to have their land designated as an APA. Multiple landowners are in the same, who are in the same area, may submit a joint proposal to begin the process. The landlord should contact their local government as the county or city legislative body handles these applications. And so what do we need? We need an ordinance for an APA. There's your, one of your solutions. Requirements for an APA. Minimum acreage, the typical, typically, a minimum amount of land is required to qualify, it varies, of course, by the country, by the county. Agricultural use. The land must be actively used for farming, ranching, or other agricultural production, which includes the processing or retail marketing of crops, livestock, and livestock products when more than fifty percent of the products are operated, produced. Zoning compatibility. The land should be appropriately zoned for agricultural use. Compatible zoning designations generally allow for agricultural activities as a primary use. These may include designations such as agricultural, agricultural residential, or rural residential. Consider those possibilities to be added. Depending on local zoning codes and often involved low-density restrictions to prevent overdevelopment. Thank you.
Anybody else?
I'm Carol Martin, Elk Meadows. A recent survey of two-hundred-and-thirty-six unincorporated San Juan County residents delivers a clear mandate, protect our agricultural rural way of life, strengthen communication, and empower homestead businesses while rejecting heavy-handed enforcement. Before adopting any new land use ordinance, county leaders must recognize these facts and align policy with people they serve. One, redefining rural. Before we debate policy, we must be sure we share the same dictionary, because the word rural is doing an awful lot of work. Our data shows that rural doesn't mean neglected, it means intentional self-reliance. Half of respondents, fifty percent, define rural as a county or large expanse of land with a low population, while another forty-six percent said it means large acreage agricultural homesteads that operate free of urban services. Two percent of the survey respondents said rural areas should be places for municipalities to expand into. That's a fringe view, not a foundation. Urban, meanwhile, is judged by infrastructure rather than population. Seventy percent said a place feels urban whenever neighborhoods, utilities, paved roads, and government services cluster together. Just thirteen percent insist a city must top one-hundred-thousand people, and fourteen percent pointed to high-density examples such like, such as Salt Lake City or Denver. Subdivisions and curbs create an urban footprint regardless of population. If planners treat open land as merely not yet urban, their policies will threaten the independence the people move here to preserve. Two, a crisis of representation and communication. The survey exposes a widening disconnect between county government and the public. Seventy-three percent of residents say they feel unrepresented in shaping the county's future, while a scant three percent report genuine satisfaction. Ask whether the county follows its own general plan, fifty-eight percent replied that they simply do not know, and another thirty-eight percent answered no. When nearly the entire electorate believes leadership is either opaque, or of course, any new ordinance risks deepening mistrust. Communication failures compound the problem. Seventy-nine percent of respondents are not signed up for county email notices. Streamlining signups, advertising public channels, and delivering plain language updates would be a wiser first step than pushing a complex law that most citizens have never heard explained. Number three, freedom to thrive, homestead and microenterprises. When participants were asked what future development matters, development matters most, eighty-one percent called for less government regulation, seventy-three percent demanded stronger protection of citizens' rights, and forty-five percent wanted to see more homestead family businesses. In addition, eighty-nine percent support allowing microenterprises under agricultural zoning, defined here as any small business large enough to support a family without being a nuisance to neighbors. These enterprises, market gardens, artisan workshops, repair shops, home bakeries, do far more than sustain the families who run them, they recycle money inside the county, fill service gaps, and build resilience against outside economic shocks. For many households, this income represents twenty to fifty percent of their yearly, yearly earnings, a lifeline that requires no federal subsidy and almost no public infrastructure, but local permission. Clamping down on such ventures through blanket land use restrictions would be not only short-sighted, but economically self-destructive. Number four, citizens want partnership, not policing.
That's your time.
That's my time, thank you.
Okay.
I can go? Don't know where I left off. Property rights rank very important for ninety-nine percent of respondents and eighty-seven percent oppose spending tax money on an employee whose job would be to seek outland use violations. Launching an enforcement arm when three-quarters of residents already feel unheard would look like, would look less like service and more like surveillance. This risks turning good citizens into violators, not because they're acting in bad faith, but because the ordinance hasn't been crafted in good collaboration. The county's limited funds could accomplish far more if they were redirected toward outreach workshops, streamlined permitting, or seed money grants that help rural entrepreneurs comply with rules and succeed. A call to pause and listen. This ordinance, as written, doesn't reflect the voice of the people. It complicates instead of simplifies, restricts instead of empowers, enforces instead of represents. Most concerning, it sets a course for development the community clearly does not support. Now is not the time to push this forward, it's time to pause, revise with, revise with humility, and invite true community participation, not just public comment. If passed in this current form, this ordinance will feel disconnected and deepen the divide between leaders and the people they serve. Let's rebuild trust by providing time to discuss, debate, and listen plainly, powerfully, and together. Thank you.
Any other in-house?
Yeah, lots of, lots more comments.
Come on down.
No.
I think you spoke.
Yes.
My name is Kim Van Dyke, I live in Huntsville, Utah, and I've been employed with Love's Travel Stops for twenty-eight years. Let me pass something out real quick, it's just kind of an update to what I saw that you guys received. This is a new, not even new, it's twenty-twenty-one, I've been to a lot of meetings, you're showing a different site plan than what we have presented and that we have agreed to do through all the meetings that I attended. And as if you look at it right off the bat, I would say, a lot of, a lot of comments. And first off, I appreciate your time, I appreciate the job that you do, and I know that you have a population of over fourteen thousand people in this county to look after, along with these folks that took the time to come. But the site plan that you're looking at is very different than what you have in your booklet. I started this site in twenty-eighteen, and I think we're twenty-twenty-five, so it's been a long time. During that time, I met with these folks and with you all, and we've gone over the Love's site plan many, many times, and all these comments that were given, I would never say that they're silly, because I don't think my arguments are silly. I take my job seriously, and I think you all do, too. So I would say, all of these items, I'd like to address them all again and again, as I have many times, but I can't, too many. But I would like to address real quickly, if you look at the site plan, we had trucks showing in the very beginning up against the residential area within that thirty-foot barrier. Right away, when I heard the concerns, we, meaning my boss, we went back, took all those trucks on the south side, as you look at this, they're on the back half of our property now, on the back half of the thirteen-acre site. We also took all the underground tankage out of the top and moved it all the way down to the back half of the property. We put the detention pond between as another barrier. We do dark sky lights, we do all of the required studies that they said that we haven't done, we've done them all. And we also rate as one of the highest trucks, travel center companies in the nation with all of our fueling system, the underground tanks, double-wide piping, I could go on and on and on. We have fuel prevention, we have quality inspections, we do it all, we take it seriously, that's why we're the largest truck stop in the nation. In twenty-ten, the federal government mandated particular manner, all semi-trucks have to be by that or not. It's over?
Nope.
We're good?
I gave you three more.
Okay, thank you, appreciate it. So the particular matter since twenty-ten, all the semi-trucks have to, that's a long time ago, I would doubt that there's anything other than a farm truck that does not comply with those mandated requirements. As for prostitution and crime, again, if you really research Love's, you'll find out that we're a giving company, we're the number-one company funding donations to Children's Miracle Network, we have been for year after year after year, we're on truckers against trafficking. We do everything we can to run a business that will provide your community with thirty to forty jobs, full-time, part-time, opportunities to grow with the largest company in the nation, and to also do the right thing in everything that we do. And that also means, for the county, sales tax, property tax, revenue, that is sizable. So, we do deal with Sitla, that came up, they do have land all over, that just doesn't mean it's the perfect land for a travel stop. It just doesn't work that easy, go down the road. Most towns in America have been growing over time, and you have to accommodate that, and I know that's your job. And I appreciate your time listening to us as a company, and just wanted to update you on those items, and I'd like to reserve- And I'd like to reserve the time to answer any questions that you all may have at any time also.
Thank you.
Is there anybody that give me your time?
Trent, I love you. But what you just did was wrong. Nobody else got extra time like that from the commission.
That's your opinion?
It is my opinion, and it's the opinion of most people sitting in here, I would guess. This is the kind of stuff that happens that makes us distrust government. Please, don't do things like that. I know you may be pro this truck stop. And this guy, if he wanted time, he should have got on the agenda. That's how you do it if you want more time. But giving us three minutes is ridiculous. You can't articulate a halfway complex idea in three minutes. You can't do it. And so to give this guy extra time just because he's promoting what you want is very, very frustrating to me and to other people in this room. That's all I'm gonna say.
Any other comment?
Hi, Michelle Peterson. I live in Moab, Utah. So you might think I'm here to talk about the Loves gas station, but I'm not. I actually purchased a land in Old LaSalle this last year, and I am super excited. And the reason I purchased it is because my husband and I have a goat farm in Moab, and it's, Moab is changing, and we want to live in a more rural area. So I just wanted to get up here and say thank you to all the longstanding citizens that will be my neighbor eventually to our beautiful goat farm where we pack in the LaSalle Mountains with our goats for hunting and lots of rural activity, for coming today and voicing your opinion to hopefully keep San Juan County, Old LaSalle, rural for people like us that want to live a rural lifestyle but are kind of being pushed out of Moab, Utah for that. So I appreciate you all for talking, and thank you for your guys' time.
Okay, any other in-house? Okay. We'll go to online.
Got Ned Plasen. You can go ahead.
All right, great. Thank you for your time. I hope you can hear me all right. My name is Ned Plasen, and I'm located at one forty Terra Drive. That is directly behind, to the east of the proposed truck stop location. My wife and I have been property owners and residents of northern San Juan County for twenty-five years, actually slightly over twenty-five years. I wanted to note that our property is directly affected by any truck stop decisions made by the planning commissions regarding, planning commission regarding the Sunny Acres location as we have direct line of sight to the the actual property in question. We would like to have on record our opposition to the truck stop as it's currently proposed. I do understand that you have some new documents apparently in front of you. We based, we base our opposition on the current and only application that we're aware of, and its associated rough plans, as well as a conflicting document that has been filed with the state as sources for our understanding of the project. Note that the document filed with the state and the application are in conflict regarding the tractor trailer density. I'd also like to note at this point that it was mentioned earlier by a gentleman from Loves that the trucks were moved from the north side to the east side. All that does is move the trucks to another different residential location. So it doesn't really solve the problem that way. The majority of the properties affected, including ours, are residential. Most are long-term rentals. There are some of those directly behind the proposed site where the trucks are now being proposed to be located, and private residences like ours and many of our neighbors within the one thousand feet of the the site location. We do not believe that a truck stop with fifty-three to potentially ninety-five tractor trailers with overnight stays can be in harmony with a residential area. I'm not aware of any other truck stop, and I've traveled around many in the West that have that density adjacent to residences. The majority of the concerns we have outlined in our emails sent to the planning commission on October eleventh in twenty twenty-four and July eighth of twenty twenty-five are the result of the density of the vehicles proposed.
Ned?
Thank you.
I have Carolyn Daly. Carolyn, are you there? You can go ahead. Okay, we'll come back to Carolyn. Daniel? Daniel Wright, if you're online, you can go ahead.
Hello. Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Hello.
We can hear you.
I'm Daniel Wright. I've spoken many times in support of the commission and in support of Kristen specifically. And I want to reiterate that support tonight. Since moving here in twenty eighteen, I've been a business owner and a landowner. In that time, I've helped provide infrastructure, jobs, businesses, and homes in San Juan County. My business provides tax revenues on a daily basis, nine months out of the year, to our beloved county. There's a wide representation of San Juan County residents at this meeting and meetings like this that we've had in the last year. And they seem rather united in opposition for various reasons. I fully support a rezone and revising the land use. But I feel like it needs to be scrapped or changed. It needs to be much more focused on the lifestyle that we've all lived. And I echo Sylvia Stubbs' position and the county commission position that this just does seem rushed, and I think some changes need made. That's all I have. And if possible, I'd like to give the remainder of my time to Ned.
Forty seconds. Forty. Ned, can you hear me?
That's it.
Yes, I can. And thank you, Daniel, for doing that. Where I left off, I think, is we do not believe a truck stop with fifty-three to ninety-five trucks with overnight stays can be in harmony with the residential area. The majority of our concerns due to that density, and in the emails we sent October eleventh and July eighth of this year, we believe we've provided a number of mitigations that I think would help the community and probably help Loves be a better neighbor. If the, if the commission chooses to continue with the truck stop, we would hope that the concerns of the citizens directly impacted would be considered, and the application be conditional to address and reduce the impacts to the community. Thank you for your time.
Thanks, Ned. Connor, we'll just keep going down the list, and we'll come back up to you, Carolyn. Connor, go ahead.
Hey, my name is Connor Simmons, and I'm also on Terra Drive in northern San Juan County. In the agenda, it says that northern San Juan County wanted to maintain the residential residential nature of the area along Sunny Acres. I'm okay with that, and also would stand that I'm opposed to the to the truck stop as it stands. But Sunny Acres is a thoroughfare. East of Terra Drive, there's a forty-one acre, forty-one acres of land that is likely to be developed in coming years. Using a quarter acre lot, that's likely to be a hundred and ten to a hundred and thirty homes that will dump onto Sunny Acres. Ultimately, I am okay with leaving Sunny Acres residential. However, I want to make it clear that since prior to owning my properties on Terra Drive, that it is commercial on the east side, on the west side. To my understanding, at least four of the property owners, including me, have understood that. Several others are using it as such. A little bit about my business is I've always tried to do everything in good faith. I've been to many of these meetings. I believe the commission knows what I'm doing, and we've always been transparent about it. I applied for a business license over two years ago and was just recently declined, even though we've been told many times to wait for the new zoning. We have, we have applied for two zoning changes, and we were denied our right to petition that to this committee because we are waiting for the new zoning change. On the new zoning change, I was told over two and a half years ago that this would be done in a few months. I've heard that for too long. This directly impacts my business, my livelihood for my family from what I purchased in twenty twenty-one, which was, that business was started in twenty eighteen. We can't wait any longer, but I agree with many of the folks here. We need to get it cleaned up and make sure to protect our property rights, especially since I bought a property for a purpose. I know I am not alone. What scares me the most is that we were told in the meeting in December with hundreds in attendance that you would work with us, using me and my neighbor as a public example that you are here to work with us. I felt like that was true, and you would work with us, which you did. We have made and are working on making changes that you requested. Then we were blindsided. The county took legal action against us when we are trying our best. You gave us ten days to respond with our attorney, which we didn't have, so we had to get. We were told that you would have a hearing in twenty days. Today is fifty days since our response to you, and we have one email saying he will be setting up a hearing with you shortly. This is another example of how things go with the county. We want to work with you, and you say you want to work with us. My question to you is, will you please work with us, the people? I believe most people are doing good and are trying their best. I think that is true for you and me. That's all I've got. Thanks.
Thanks, Connor.
Okay, Joy, you're up.
All right. So, hey, everyone had so many really great things to say. I want to touch on the agenda item about the general plan. Changing the general plan, politely allow for the regulations and restrictions in the Land Use Act that most of us are speaking against is not how you fix the public trust that has been broken. To say it, to take a non-personal, I don't mean this in a personal manner, but there are probably two or three hundred of us that are really wondering which one of us or which three or four are the extremes. I know you know what I'm talking about. I want to say we're not extreme in wanting to protect our private property rights. Furthermore, we aren't ignorant or unteachable. We just haven't been heard. The general plan is, or at least was, our only protection. And I would like to know if there will be any public input concerning changes in the general plan. Thank you.
Thanks, Joy.
All right, Holly, you're up.
Thanks. Can you hear me? Okay, Holly Slov from northern San Juan County. Just, just sort of a quick comment. I understand, and I'm not there, and I'm sorry for that, but I understand that there's a new proposal on the truck stop that would, that is for ninety-three truck stops or ninety-five truck stops, I'm not sure, and and far fewer fifty-three automobile parking spaces. I just want to point out that the staff report and recommendation on the Loves truck stop is based on a different proposal. It's based on just the opposite. Ninety-something car, automobile parking parking spots and fifty-three truck stops. And so that's just, that's really different. And we've been confused about this for a few months because both proposals have kind of been floating around. But I just hope that the commission will note that, and, you know, it's a big difference. Thanks.
Thanks, Holly.
Hey, Monet.
Monet.
Monet, sorry.
Hi, can you hear me?
We can. Go ahead, Monet.
Okay, thank you. My name's Monet Clark, and I live in Spanish Valley, on Spanish Valley Drive, not too far from, of the Pro Fly, not too far from where the Loves would be. I just want to say that I have been in opposition to this truck stop ever since I heard about it. I personally do not think it's the highest investment use of that particular parcel of land. Now, I know that you think there'll be a lot of taxes and other kinds of goodies coming to the county. That may be true, but I believe that I, as a resident in Spanish Valley, I don't appreciate these thrown under the bus as a part of the cash cow mentality. Right? So.
Heart gettings about it.
I just think that money's not the only objective that a county government should be considering. You want to consider the people who actually have invested and want to live here permanently. What's the use of of having a county if you're, if you're hurting the people who are trying to live here? I just feel that government has a duty to promote the health, safety, and welfare of the people who live in the county. That's the purpose of government, of our county government and of all of its designated boards. So. I, too, like Susan Carter, feel frustration that for seven years the county hasn't been listening to our voices. And there have been very few really educated discussions at the PNC. I mean, I'm talking about not just your personal feelings, but your researched opinions or your, I've never seen anybody at the PNC talk about how they researched some different thing about truck stops or or anything. It's not, you always leave it up to the public to have to bring up all these things, whereas it truly is your duty to be doing your due diligence. If studies have been done, studies should have been published where the public can read and understand the results of the studies that Loves has, that they did. I haven't seen a thing, and we're concerned about these things. So why haven't we heard anything about the supposed studies? Anyway, thank you. I'm against it.
Carolyn, we'll come back up to you. Are you there?
I am. Thank you. I was, I had trouble because I was trying to also have what I was going to say in front of me. Okay, I am Carolyn Daly, the person who started the Northern San Juan County Coalition in two thousand and nineteen to organize my neighbors to oppose the Loves truck stop. We had nearly one hundred members, and over a hundred and seventy-five people wrote emails opposing the truck stop. Our group is now burned out after over six years of fighting the truck stop. But I am sure that everyone is still as opposed to it as before. I have to switch to something else here. Whoops. A truck stop is not a gas station and should not have been approved, even under the old ordinances. This was done under the table by the county planner and without proper application procedures. That's a fact. If the county wants a truck stop for revenue, then please put it at LaSalle Junction where one is really needed, or at least further south on the highway, just because sitla is selling this for. Just because Sitla is selling this particular parcel is not a sufficient reason to put it there. The proposed location is too close to residential neighborhoods with families and is also next adjacent to a climbing gym that is used by children coming and going, uh, at the warehouses. The fumes from diesel trucks are a proven health risk, especially to the children, elderly, and sick who reside nearby. The noise pollution from over 100 trucks 24/7, possibly idling for hours and amplified by the nearby canyon walls is unthinkable and unfair to impose on the neighbors. Truck stops are also a proven magnets for crimes such as drugs, prostitution, and human trafficking that are a serious safety risk for the neighborhood. There's a reason why there are committees against this, you know? So what if Loves is on it? It doesn't stop it from happening. There are Love's Truck Stops both in Grand Junction, which is two hours away, and Green River, which is 45 minutes away, that are on the outskirts of those towns and far away from residential neighborhoods. Truckers can refuel and stay there, so there is no need for one and one, and MOAB. As, as Monet mentioned, the county commission is actually charged with the health, safety, and welfare of its citizens as its primary function in this, in the statutes. A Love Truck Stop so near residential neighborhoods is clearly a violation of this charge and should be disapproved. It should never have been approved by the county planner to begin with. That would have saved us all a lot of time and trouble and money. Thank you for your consideration of my views and I hope you will all do the right thing finally. Thank you.
Are there any more comments online? Last call for comments.
No, there's a guy that called in. His last name is Harris. I don't know if you showed that on a different screen or not.
I don't have it.
Okay. Let's close the public comment period. Let's look at number two.
So, uh, consideration discussion for updates of the general plan's land use chapter. We are discussing only the land use section of the general plan. And so tonight, we are just taking an initial look at what we have, um, to see, kind of flag it. So just a little bit of history here. We are operating off the 2018 general plan. It is on our website, so you can find it right there, front and center.
If you click on that, it doesn't take you anywhere.
There you go.
We fixed it in the last 24 hours.
Nope. So the current general plan was updated in 2018. Um, upon completion of this prior general plan, the planning administrator at the time did begin to update the land use ordinance. That is how the 2019 Spanish Valley supplementary ordinance, remember it is not a full and complete ordinance on its own, came about, um, was because we were trying to get these updates implemented. The countywide ordinance never came to fruition after several years of attempts. So in January, we moved the land use ordinance forward with these considerations, um, but it was tabled for six months by county commission. We have not moved forward with the land use ordinance or the general plan in these six months. We have been, uh, we hosted five more workshops. We have kept communication lines open to the public. Um, we have been forwarding emails, phone messages. Um, I have been meeting individually with several people upon request.
But you haven't been in your office at all.
This isn't open discussion.
Tell the truth.
You will be excused if you continue.
Go ahead and try.
You know, I'm going to just call this meeting to end. Can I get a motion? Or you guys?
What, what's, what's your thinking, Trent?
I'm just done. Somebody can be in charge.
We've got one motion on the table. Would anybody like to second this meeting to an end?
In light of no second, the meeting continues.
I will take over chair since our vice chair is fighting fires currently.
Probably not smart for you to take over chair.
Would you like to be chair?
Sure, I'll be chair.
Thank you.
Thanks, Melissa.
There was a guy on the phones. He just said he didn't take him. He was on the phones, waiting to respond.
Okay, I, as the planning administrator, am going to pause this meeting and I need to go make a phone call. I will be back. Let's take a 10-minute break. Everyone go to the bathroom.
Yeah, we don't have a quorum anymore.
Yeah, we do.
We do?
We do. We still have a quorum.
I'll bet we're four.
Yeah, we don't have a tiebreaker.
So as the chair, you can call certain shots here. I, you know, I've long felt that, you know, getting someone else your time to speak, I don't know if that's really allowed. You can allow it, but we're past that now. And I thought I'd look to start a chain set in the middle. For the future, I may try to get a answer on that, so the next time.
It is a lot in the Bible.
But it's not a requirement, right?
So the chair can be, you know?
The other thing is, it is okay for you to, the chair, to excuse someone that wanted to hear, so that, you know, Shannon's just out of line a lot of times. You want to respect him, he doesn't want to respect you in the process. He wants to- I'm going up, I'm taking a subject. I'm just telling you that, um, if you have those authorities, voting on this is really important tonight, the applicants.
Yeah.
And Trent leaving could affect pass or fail.
It's, it's not going to go well.
And, and so, um, you know, um, one option is to, um, if it, you could just dismiss the meeting and the next time we come, maybe we can have some, you can have the attorney's office speak a little bit in the ring and talk about it. There's going to be a lot of stuff said.
Yeah.
Appropriate and you can regulate the meeting. In fact, you didn't have to allow them. You can just say we're not going to have it tonight because we have a last night.
Can we get a sheriff's deputy to come over? Just, just to hang, just to help cool.
What's that, Anne?
I mean, we did that in a, a past meeting.
I don't know.
A neutral-
I guess there's someone available.
Yeah, I mean, someone that just can help keep order because-
So another option-
Another job today.
Another option, you can address the group and say if everybody's willing, then form, then we'll continue. Not, you want to ask Shannon, please, or not, because that's broken.
You can call the sheriff's office.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, I think we did that.
So you want me to go ahead and-
I, I- I mean, our chair just left. He was that upset.
Yeah, I think-
That's a significant reason to be like-
I think you do, yeah.
We need somebody to manage the room. And it's not a-
I wasn't quite sure, like, if I could give a, I'll be happy to do this.
Okay, I'm going to go use the bathroom.
Good idea.
No.
You can also say Trent disrupted the meeting and you were responsible.
There's really no requirement.
There is. The, the commissioners that stayed are doing the right thing. I don't know if I'm allowed to say that directly to you guys, but-
You're going to be much better off just-
I didn't Spanish for it.
Okay, go back to Spanish. But you're a planning, but you're a trader to planning.
But, but this, this is why we have to call the sheriff's deputy because we cannot talk to each other like that in a public meeting.
I, I, I agree.
Right? Yeah, it's not productive. It's not helping us get things resolved and we, we're, it just wastes a lot of time.
He's told more mistruths than just leaning up here.
That is not true.
That is true.
Oh, my word.
That is true.
Name one of them.
One of them?
Yeah.
The, the police said about-
Guys, this is a break. I think this is really unprofessional.
Right.
This is ridiculous. Let's be adults.
Maybe, maybe just, we need to leave the room and take a break.
Attorney, we're in a house like this is, please be-
He's the one that told me I should go back to pro. Why did she wait? I didn't, and, and Mr. is the one that told me it was time to-
Please be an adult, you're a attorney.
You're, you're assuming, you are assuming.
Please be quiet, like, everybody, this is enough.
Oh, it's so silly.
I think it's a clean keeper. Beautiful, it's all on video. We need to get to the point where something different is happening because we just keep getting, not listening to it. I've been here 18 years and this is how it's been for 18 and more years. So I'm ready to make a statement. I'm ready to stand, so. I'm ready to move. It's wrong, you shouldn't have had a meeting. I completely agree. We shouldn't do that. I'm just, I just had it.
I think that, I think that the level went up when, when Trent gave that gentleman extra three minutes and didn't give anybody else extra three minutes. And I think that's when the whole level went up in the room. And I, and I, and I think that he should just apologize or give it to everybody else after that.
Just say, Carol, just say.
When the sheriff shows up, you can ask again.
Okay. About, what am I supposed to say?
For him to leave.
For him to leave?
For Shannon to leave.
Okay.
I'm, I'm not going to call you, Paul.
Thank you, Shannon. Carol.
Anyway, that's just kind of when I think all, the whole level in the room went up and perhaps he could have apologized or he could have given everybody else the extra three minutes that was online or something. But I think that that's when all the level went up in the room. It just felt really unfair. And I don't think it was right. And I, and, and, you know, we're all human and we make mistakes and he could have apologized. And then I think he got upset about that too, at the confrontation and, and granted, some of the people spoke out of line when they shouldn't have, because it's a, it's a meeting where you're not supposed to speak unless you have your three minutes and there are rules and people broke those rules. But I think that we're all adults and I think that we, we could actually settle down and, and, and talk. And I think it's fantastic that, that you shook the chair and decided to have, have this moment, you know? But I, I, I think that there's a lot of, of, a lot of people's lives that are, that, that they think are going to change due to the ordinance and I think that that brings everybody's emotions off a lot.
Well, we have a lot of business to deal with. I don't know if you saw everything we had to talk about tonight. So we've got a lot to work through.
Yeah, yeah.
Just, just so you know, there's a bunch of us citizens that would love to help you wade through this ordinance and find all discrepancies. We would love to do that. We've been begging to do it for months. Kristen has told us no at every turn. You probably don't even know that we've been offering. So that's what I'm saying.
We get the emails.
Okay.
We do get the emails.
Do you have working documents where we've been like, okay, this one, we need to change that? We, we've done some, but we've been waiting for all these changes that were supposed to happen since January before we get started and we still haven't seen them.
Like, I don't know if you really want to have a discussion or you just want to speak down to everybody, but it's not a six-month process. It hasn't been since January. It's been a six-year process. We've literally had meetings where we've gone through the definition, we've gone through the setbacks, we've gone through the heights. And then you come and you're just like, well, it's not there and she clicks on it. It's there. I mean-
It, it wasn't there yesterday.
And then, and then it's-
23A.
There's so many discrepancies. I, I don't know, I don't know 23A. I don't know, I would just say like-
Let's find it.
If I'm just saying, let's find it and fix it. But it, it's kind of like, well, we're taking away what rights? Like, we have gone through and you can do, as a landowner in blinding, you can do way more under the new than you can the old.
A big difference. We've done a side-by-side analysis and it's just not true.
Name one, show me one.
I will.
Okay. I know, and we see the emails and that's why we have a meeting, but we have a meeting to go through. Kristen can't change it. Kristen can't change it.
Okay, timeout, 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 come on. We got to get this, we got, we got a long meeting ahead of us. Let's- Say again?
It would be great to have a forum where we can actually have this. And when we're in this meeting, we have so much to get done, we can't have this conversation. Yeah, it's true. There's no, you have to back over. You don't really know whether or not you're really being heard or not. Because sometimes when somebody's speaking, two other people up there are talking to each other.
Well, I, I, I'm sure, I have little things with circles to follow up on. I'm sure Anne does as well.
Yeah, absolutely. I think it's just the nature of public meetings and the, the way it's, what, Robert's rules and all of that stuff. Hi. Um, we just wanted, um, a little, uh, I guess, an objective, an outside person, their presence to be here so that people can remember that this is a public meeting and we need to act with decorum and, um, be respectful. Or that, that then we have the right to have that person removed from the meeting if they can, if they're disruptive.
All right.
So you got the planning and zoning committee here.
Good.
You have a chair, which is Melissa at this point.
Nice to meet you.
And we have at least one person in the audience that won't conform. And so we'd like them to be, well, I'll let Melissa if she wants them to be removed.
Are you able to stay for a while?
I'll stay for a while, yeah.
Yeah, so let's do this. Let's just everybody settle their jets, okay? Oh, Sylvia, please.
Okay, I'm here as a citizen.
You're a citizen?
As a citizen.
Okay.
As a commissioner, according to our rules, I can only voice as a commission chair. I want to clarify something. The chair, and I can talk before the lawyer, I said, the chair has, according to our rules, has the right to give somebody a time. And I have said that to them, remember, as a lawyer, one time I said, one of these day, because as I said there sometimes, I feel like people need to say more. And so I wanted to clarify with the lawyers that that's a, that is a right of a chair to have that. The chair can also decide, as a chair, I can say, give my chair position to somebody else if I want to make a motion. There are few things that under the chair, we entitled to do that. And so, um, and I just want to clarify that, so there's not that feeling for what had happened there. And so it may be one of these days, perhaps you'll see me doing that to somebody that's in this room and- um, I, um, I'm just gonna say that much because I just, when I come over here, it's not commissioner staffs, this is Sylvia's staffs that come trying to learn the process, so when it comes before me, I know the process that you went through. Make my decision. And so, in our, if the chair was here, you would say, that probably I'm the first commissioner that had done this for many, since he's been in that chair, he has never seen a commissioner come.
The bottom of the page, Kristin.
And so, anyway, I just, just wanna soften a little bit.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I think it's just, it's just too much sometimes with people and we just gotta get a little bit.
Yeah. Well, you know, what we may end up doing is taking a couple of stretch breaks and, you know, maybe somebody can tell a joke at some point. But let's just keep this meeting going, right? Because we've got so much business, okay? Everybody on board? On board?
Especially where you have to travel an hour at home.
Thank you, thank you for.
Five and a half.
Yeah, we got some long drives. Okay, so let's start talking about the general plan. Let's go back to the general plan, Krista.
Break's over.
Break's over. We're ba- we're back in session. Thanks for doing that.
Okay, we are back to agenda item number two. Um, there was a call when we pitched this in January, there was a call to update the general plan again. So, I'm not gonna go back over the history as we were interrupted, but, um, we attempted to pitch the new land use after the two thousand, it basically got shut down. If that had happened, we wouldn't be making this huge hurdle that we are now. So just understand that that, it was running accordingly and it never got finished. Um, we don't want to end up in the same cycle where we are doing just this, you know, vicious general plan to, general plan to land use update and it's always not good enough because it takes us years to get it passed. These kind of need to run in tandem. A really good way that it was explained to me by our legal team is that the general plan is your vision. It's extremely broad. What do we want the county to look like, to feel like? You know, what, what kind of livelihoods do we have? The land use ordinance is the tool for administering that. Okay, so the general plan, our section is very short, um, but keep in mind, that's, that's how they have to run in tandem with each other. The general plan is not a policy. You know, we, we don't go there to look for legal issues or for building codes or anything like that. That is the tool of the land use ordinance. Um, so on June twenty-sixth, myself and Jens Nielsen met, we looked at it. Um, we also had the plat review team, so that is roads, surveyor, recorders, uh, assessors, health department, they also looked at just the land use section of the general plan. Some of them were kind of a blind eye to it, you know, which I think is a good unbiased opinion. Um, and we further kind of looked at what, what might be contradicting with what we've got. Cause that's the feedback that we've heard from the community. So, um, our goal tonight, we put together this schedule. Um, we're already a month behind because county commission doesn't have a second meeting in July. And so, we're going to very much try to stick to this schedule, um, as, as much as we can. Um, it is over the next six months. So, again, they have to run in tandem with the general plan being updated and adopted prior to the land use being updated and adopted. This does not mean we need to stop work on the land use ordinance. We are going to continue to look at this in smaller sections. Um, what it does mean is that once the general plan is updated, we will make sure that the LDMO reflects those values. Um, so here's an outline of the chunks we are taking. Um, we're shooting for December again and that would make it in effect as of January first. So tonight, um, little bit of background, on July first at county commission meeting.
Can I, can I ask a question about this, about the schedule? Can you go back this, yeah. So, so when people like, you know, in this, in the audience have talked about like, you know, going through it line by line, this is the, this is what we are going to do. So, tonight we're gonna talk about one through six, in August, seven through ten. So, so all the feedback for those specific sections that are on this, um, schedule for like, yeah, that's the appropriate time to tell us what like, when a section is wrong or, or you know, you don't like a definition. We'll be talking about those things. So next month, we're gonna be talking about chapters seven through ten.
Correct. And they can send any comments at any time. Um, we have put together, I'm just gonna show you, we've put together a shared, so this is everybody's comments that we have received via email, via phone call. This is everything we've got. We didn't wanna put names on it, so we just put initials and the date it was received. Um, so we have set up another one for August and I already have issues for August that we need to look at.
Okay.
Um, so you can send them at any time and we will get it on this list for review. So it does not, yes, we're fine tooth combing these sections, but you can send anything at any point.
Okay, so is the county commissioners also?
Yes, so.
So.
Just make sense of this schedule, there's kinda two columns.
Right.
So the plat team is going to be joining work sessions with the county commission. For instance, Rhodes, a road superintendent. I don't know the details of Rhodes and what he's looking for. He needs to be there to answer that he needs sixty feet to turn a blade around in a cul-de-sac. And he needs eighty feet if it's in La Salle because he has nowhere to put the snow. So, he has those kind of details that when county commission is going through this with a fine tooth comb and they're saying, why did you do this, why did you do this? That we have health departments there to answer those questions on septic. Rhodes is there to answer questions about Rhodes. Um, you know, the, the surveyors are there, the recorders are, everybody's represented. Keep in mind that all of those people, we did, we had very, very few comments on these chapters because those are all the people who initially wrote it. Um, so they are more or less going back over the things we have changed. But they wrote it with me through April of last year. So they worked on it four or five months. So they're kind of reviewing, okay, what are the changes planning commission did and let's make sure that that still works and is in line. They also have the two thousand twenty-five updates in mind for their, like, the recorders, things change every year. So she knows exactly what needs to be changed per her department.
This looks like the county commission is going to be working on the ordinance chapter by chapter.
Correct.
And not us.
No, this is both of you. So.
But not at the same time?
It'll be by the month. So the month of July, everybody is doing chapters one through six. The month of August, we're doing seven through ten. So you will not be in the same work session as county commission. County commission will have a separate work session and you guys will have a work session associated.
Why, why are we doing that? Because that gets things even more complicated than they already are between seven of us. Now we've got three more commissioners that are having to study and understand these.
The commissioners.
And department heads.
And department, yeah.
The commissioners need to go through it with a fine tooth comb and they need us there to explain.
So this is new. This is a new, um.
We are trying to have county commissioners have, have some skin in the game, that they've looked at it, they've made their revisions.
Okay, well, just so we all know that this is not, was not the original.
And this gives us a double checks. It gives us a double checks and balances because every time county commission makes a change, it, it gets bounced back and forth. So that both approving bodies are on the same page. Now, it won't be by the day same page, but it will at least be by the month same page.
I like the idea, but I think it, it's just, um, uh, could have, there could be some problems, um, trying to iron out what, um, could be recommended at their, on their end, what the public wants and what this body wants. It's just a, a lot of.
Let me push forward just a little bit. At the July first county commission meeting, we were given the green light to hire a consultant to do just what you're talking about, Anne. So we'll be discussing it, they will be tapped into those meetings and they will be coordinating those efforts. It might mean more workshops. I don't expect our planning commission to give up their lives to do more workshops. We've had ten. Um, and I feel like we have given people adequate time, notice, et cetera, to voice. Even though we might not accept all of the requests, um, we have given people adequate time to be heard. It has been documented that you have been heard.
I just don't want another thing to slow down our new date, which is the beginning of the year, right? So like, here's now a new thing we're gonna, um, incorporate. And so this timeline has to be prioritized by the county commissioners.
See, and I, I kinda take a different stance on that.
I like it.
You know, I, I, I really don't care if it takes till next year, to be a hundred percent honest with you. I think there's nothing here we need to address. It might take us some time and I'm cool with that. And I, for one, I, I'm not a big fan of working under the, the current ordinance. But I think it's worth, but I think it's worth our time to work on the proposed one for as long as it takes.
I agree, and I also like that commission has looked at it, they've commented on it, they've made some recommendations. The public's made their recommendations, we make ours and we put it together because there are people that were well aware when it came before in January, December, what was there. They were informed and to then all of a sudden act like they didn't know what was there and we table it, that's fine. But the other two that aren't informed, it gives them an opportunity to just all three of them say, okay, we are on board. It goes to commission. If they table it again, that's on them.
That's right.
You know, we've had, we've had the process. I'm fine with six months, I'm fine with two years. To make as many people as happy as possible. So hopefully, some people can see some of the beneficial changes.
But I, I guess where I'm coming from is I think this ordinance is too bloated and we would not have so much work to do if we just chopped a bunch of it out. You know, and get it back to closer to what we had, um, and it wouldn't.
But had, when, had when we started the process, had it gotten a lot?
So we've just, we're trying to adopt this monster and telling people that we're willing to work on it for two years is, is really counterproductive to what they're telling us, which is, we need to know so we can move on with our lives, with what we can or can't do. And I think this ordinance is so complicated, too big for San Juan County, and if we chopped it back, we wouldn't have so much to work on and we could actually pass this. We could get down to the essential things that we need, not all of the other little things that are in this.
See, but the flip side of, the flip side of that though is we hear a lot about.
Complicated over time later.
We hear a lot about definitions, right? Things need to be defined.
Right.
Well, that takes words and pages and it's gonna look big and ugly and hairy. You start chopping it down, we lose definitions, we lose specifics that make a good ordinance, I feel like. I'm not so concerned with the size of it, the length of it, what it looks like. I'm concerned that it works, right?
And I think the definitions is a very good example of, we're not going to please everybody. We have had a loud voice that we need to define everything and every use on that use table needs to have a definition attached to it. And we've had a loud voice saying there's too many definitions.
Right, yeah.
So we just have to find a path forward that works.
Well, and I, I like to comment on the, like, to people talk about like the subdivision ordinance. That is not us. That is a hundred percent the state of Utah. I mean, that, and this, and then there's a lot of that in here that isn't.
Right, so we don't have to work on that stuff.
Well, that's my, well, I'm just saying, but it's part of.
Most of the sections were dictated from the state. Now, as we go through these chapter by chapter, we may be able to cut some things out. But also you need to hear the voice from the plat review team that wrote it. There is a reason, what, private roads is a very good example. There is a reason why we needed to define that.
Yes.
If it wasn't an issue, we wouldn't even have it on our radar.
Right, so it's on the priority list, something to make sure gets fixed, clarified, whatever.
Clarified, yeah, which is more words making it bigger.
But then it's the requirement, like, the private roads.
Yeah, right.
There's the requirement for the private road that is private, but if you want to do this
Right.
at the end of your private road, then you have to be able to have access for the services. That's, that's why, I mean, we had that comment of like, well, but there's, it's two pieces.
Yeah.
Well, so as long as that's what we're focusing on is fixing the big stuff
Yeah.
and not creating more problems with all the other extra stuff that's in there.
Yeah.
You know what I mean?
Private roads is a great example.
We need to think as simple as possible.
Right, and maybe redlining some stuff out of there.
Yeah.
So, so this is just an outline, we're gonna go through chapters one through six tonight with a fine tooth comb.
And we'll see that.
Can we cut that in half?
The commission came up with, when we go through.
Yeah, so, so it will bounce back and forth between our meetings of their work sessions and our next meetings. You know, whatever I have from whoever's ahead of the game, you know, right now, we're ahead of the game because they don't meet a second time in July. So all of the comments from tonight will go for their August work session. Um, so anyways, this is just an outline of, this is the roadmap of where we're headed. Um, this has been published online, it's been in multiple meetings on record. And so, for the community, this is what we're working on. You, you can see it for the next six months, this is where we're headed. Um.
And just, just one other thing to be clear for everybody in the, in the audience. When we talk about the general plan now, we will have a public hearing on it according to this schedule next week and with, um, excuse me, next month. Which means you can again speak about the general plan, okay?
And we're probably, by the time we get a consultant on board to look at things and yada yada, we are probably not gonna hit that August fourteenth.
Okay, we'll take back everything I said, but just.
But, but the process will still be in place.
The process will still happen, it's the date, what I mean, it's gonna just.
Right.
Okay.
You know, we're going to try to stick to this. I was not planning on county commission being gone the rest of this month.
Okay, well, let's, let's keep, let's keep moving.
That kinda threw everything off right of.
Don't forget about that public hearing as well, at the commission level.
August fourteenth is a horrible date, by the way.
We did dodge the fair.
Well, I know, I'm just saying like, your kids in college.
Oh, it is back to school week. So, we can, we'll get, yeah, if we can. Oh wait, so actually diving into the general plan. Um, so the comments we make tonight are what we would like to take forward to our consultant, right? So we, we are not making these changes, we're just identifying problems that need to be redlined that maybe are inconsistent. Um, there's been just a few little pieces of language taken out there. Um, you know, areas like Spanish Valley will most likely incorporate. We don't know about that now. Maybe, maybe not. They, there was a push for it at the time and now there's not so much of a push for it. Um, low-density residential, that doesn't exist, we just have.
Wait, 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 go back to the Spanish Valley stuff, cause you didn't just take out likely incorporated, you also took that.
It's a, it's a special plan.
A special plan has been created for the Spanish. Why are we taking that out and what are the implications? Does that mean that the Spanish Valley area plan no longer is valid?
The Spanish Valley area plan is valid, but we do not want it mentioned in our new general plan because we are going under one ordinance.
Okay, but it's, but so then that implies that the Spanish Valley area plan would be, uh, irrelevant.
Yeah, so, so the mention lower is fine because it says, hey.
We're irrelevant. You would love us.
The Spanish Valley area plan is not the Spanish Valley led moment. That was the landmark plan that they worked with Sitla and they said, here's our dream for Spanish Valley.
Right, and it's relevant to guiding decisions.
So that's in the, the very last sentence. That if there's any special plans, one day we might do a special plan for La Salle. Right, like what, if that continues to build out, it's not building very fast, but maybe one day, if it builds out or starting to build out. We might wanna have somebody come in and do a special area plan just for La Salle.
Incorporation.
It's any, yeah, you guys incorporate, so it's any plans or special plans that have been done countywide.
But it was adopted, and so like taking that out make, makes it look like there was never a plan, that it was never adopted.
It's not that, we just, we gotta be forward thinking about. Not what's now, but what's going to be, and there's going to be one ordinance for the county.
That proposed language says the San Juan County Spanish Valley area plan and any other future area plans or components of this general plan.
I see it in there, so I, that's why I'm like, why are you leaving that in? Why, why are you leaving a reference to it, but then wanna redline it out earlier?
Because we wanna get rid of any hinting that there is a Spanish Valley supplementary ordinance.
But there doesn't say ordinance, it's a, they're talking about the plan.
Okay, so I can leave it, I don't wanna get hung up, it's gonna be a really long night if we do.
But, but I'm just saying, these are really important.
Leave, make sure that the consultant leaves that in.
I just don't understand your reasoning for why you would take it out if you're still gonna reference it down the line.
Maybe what we should do is have the consultant talk to us about that. Pros and cons of leaving it in or taking it out.
Put that note, I gotta grab a water real quick.
I would suggest we change the word plan to ordinance. Or even call it the twenty nineteen Spanish Valley land use supplemental ordinance. In place of the San Juan County Spanish Valley area plan.
Well, we don't have to reference the ordinance, but that there is a plan, they're two separate things. There's a Spanish Valley ordinance. Documented and there's a Spanish Valley area plan.
Oh, you're not talking about the Spanish Valley ordinance?
And they're not either.
I'm with you.
They're not either, they're talking about the plan.
Covered with this final sentence, the paragraph. The date on this survey, I'm not sure where this data came from, it would have been pre two thousand eighteen. We did do the engagement survey last summer. And so I'm not sure if. I feel like this is probably valid, I mean, we paid a lot of money for this. And so we've done, we've done another survey that's I think well within the range of redoing the general plan. I, I don't think we need to conduct another public engagement survey. We just did it in June of last year. How do you guys feel about that? New survey? Wanna use this data?
No, but we should use the information from the survey to guide our decision making. Like to see that happen.
Um, so we'll have them pull that, um, summer of twenty four data. And update that, we'll probably keep a lot of this old data too, we'll just reference it. Um, we may or may not be consulting with the same person who originally wrote this. So that's, we haven't, we haven't secured a consultant yet.
I thought you were not going to hire, you were gonna do it in-house.
We just, we just approved to hire a consultant. Mitch Mon thinks that that's a good idea because it's a larger scope of operation than just these two and a half pages. It's also going through our land use ordinance, like I said, it, it might be community outreach and workshops and so. It's larger than just, it's a bigger job than just uh, us and I think it's. I think he has a lot of validity in hiring. On this case, a third party unbiased view. To take everything we've got. Look at the data, look at the comments and say, you know, from somebody who doesn't have any buy-in. Here's what I'm seeing objectively. So I, I think we could use that voice. Uh, um, there's just some, some minimal things like the low density just being called residential. I think people understand a one acre lot more than a forty three thousand square foot lot.
May I suggest adding rural in front of residential? I think that language would help our cause a little bit.
Ann, I have a question, it keeps referencing this future land use map. Do we have anything that like that?
So that is our zoning map.
Alright, so our new zoning map is our future land use map. It's not projected out twenty year, I mean, it, okay.
And that's this one, and this one is live. So as we make changes per meeting, this map is updated live within a day or two. This transition area was weird, um, in just this definition. I think it's better to call it like, you know, future annexation zones or potential annexation zones. Tribal lands didn't quite capture everybody because they only talk about Navajo Nation and there's other representation. Um, so the, these hazard zones and citizen sensitive lands. Um, public lands, we just, we kinda need to rearrange it a little bit. Cause you can see we've got our multi-use, commercial, industrial, ag, residential, but then it's. It's muddled with these other ideas. So I think we need all our zones clumped together and then tribal lands. Public lands, et cetera, clumped together.
What about the?
Here, go ahead.
What about the recreational support in there somewhere?
And we'll need to add recreational support.
So essentially, the, the use table and these headings are gonna match one for one, plus tribal lands and other stuff.
It's basically our, you know how we have a, a real quick definition at the beginning of each chapter of zones? It's basically that, like residential, our primary focus is residential.
Can we take a look at the multiple use, just um, language in this? It's, it says this designation is for land where residential and other uses will be limited. That very first sentence right there is contradicting our use table. And our idea, the description of multiple use in our proposed ordinance is very different.
We have redefined multi-use is not what it used to be. Ag is not what it used to be.
It's true, neither is residential.
We've added a very large scope to both of those categories. Um, to allow more of what we're seeing happening organically in the community.
So are you planning, so does that mean we need to match the language? Like copy the language from the mo- um, proposed ordinance for multiple use and. Replace this language, is that what you're proposing to do?
And that's, those are the fine tunings that the consultant will work through with us.
Because it's very confusing, they are very describing two different types of zoning districts.
You know, ag is also a little bit not where we've headed.
So we really do need to see this in August again, okay.
No, we're, this is not ready for adoption, this is step.
Okay, so we need, you need to update the schedule.
This is step one, we gotta get the consultant, the consultant will probably be working on this through August.
Well, the other thing that this really needs is, is some sort of reference to the amount of tourism. Because it talks about residents, it just can, you know, um. And so much of what we are addressing is um. Are, well, are the influx of tourists.
I think that's good. I mean, our, our health department is a really good example of that. Um, the health department gets funding based on population, not including tribal lands. So he gets funded for eight thousand people. We have way more than that. I mean, the town of Bluff literally has four times as many people staying every night as lived there. So when you're talking about water and safety and fire and ambulance being ready. The chances of going to a tourist versus somebody who lives there are eighty percent to twenty percent. And so the, this is one of the biggest conundrums with the county is how do we financially try to su- support and handle. The tourism industry, which not all of us, but it's a large part of our community and it's a large part of viability for this county to stay afloat. With making sure that we haven't overstepped our people who live here. I know they mentioned it in the first one, we'll, we'll have them look.
I'm a little bit like Ann, um, and this isn't so, I just. I know this isn't anything I'm very good at, is kind of these broad definitions. You know, and so I'm kinda like, how much does it really matter? Cause I'm reading that like Ann is and I'm like, that doesn't make any sense to me. In multi-use, you know, like this designation is for land where residential and other uses will be limited? Which one are we limiting? The other uses or the residential, I mean like.
They're describing, describing more open space in their definition.
It doesn't really affect our use table, it doesn't affect our actual zone definition, what you can and can't do, so. I mean, I, I'm, I'm just saying, I'm, I'm fine with changing, I'm fine with leaving it, I don't. Just how much does that matter?
Just, most of this is gonna be totally overhauled. We're just, we're just flagging some critical points.
We, we've made a lot of changes to the use table. Over the past year and a half, right? So, uh, I would, I would suggest that as a consultant rewrites this, he references that use table to gather our intentions to put in words on this document.
How about if we just sort of move on from this, especially since it's gotta be really overhauled completely. You guys okay with doing that?
Well, only with the. The comment that whatever gets changed in this can't contradict where, where we're going with the new ordinance.
Right, or if it does contradict, we need to look at where we're going with the new ordinance.
And then so on the third page with all the X's on it, I mean. I just have to, we have to address this reasoning, like why this language is getting proposed to be taken out. These bullets are poignant to a personal agenda, like what, what does that mean?
So if you look at each of these bullet points, they are not in line with, I think, our intent, for instance. Um, requiring residential development to locate within existing communities or within areas of services.
Why not?
We've always promoted, but we don't require it. I'm not gonna tell somebody.
So the word requires the offending word.
So there were a lot of things, but also the political climate at the time that this was written. Had a lot of public lands heat, especially with RS two four seven seven roads. And some of these points, I feel like, and the plat team agreed with me, we feel like they're too. Like picked out. And we need a broader statement, we need a broader vision of what we want the county to look like. So we can go back to the bullet points, but we kind of made an, almost a mission statement there. Of kind of this is where we wanna head, and maybe that would be a good thing to look at of what we hand the consultant of. You know, the land use goals are to broaden opportunities and land use rights to allow more economically viable growth and sustainable livelihoods.
It just seems like the whole thing was scrapped and I, I don't see why every single one of those bullets is inappropriate, but.
Most of this is gonna be scrapped.
Just saying we have gins. Thank you, gins.
So yeah, this is gonna be overhauled, I just wanted to let you guys know where we're at. Kind of what staff has been thinking, we need to, some hot points that we need to look at. Just know that this is gonna be coming over the next month or two, the consultant will be in the door here shortly. And they'll start working with us, they are gonna take. The, the general plan, this is what's happening on the inside, the general plan is a hot potato. Because every single department has a piece of the puzzle, but no one's in charge of it. And so, um, Mitch is taking the lead on this with the consultant just for the land use. Based on the fact that there were some le- legality issues associated with that.
Well, that very first bullet point is what half of our public comments were about today and it's got a big X on it, so I mean. That's something we need to rethink. Supporting the creation of agricultural and industrial protection areas by defining in county ordinance. A process of how a private property owner may establish one, I mean, clearly, we need to have that in there.
So those are your gravel pits. As per state code.
Well, no, that's also this stuff that Lynn handed, Lynn, Lynn handed out, it's this, yeah.
Yeah, which we've got a lot of people in the county who want this to be, this is a priority for them.
So we'll, when we get the consultant in, we can look at each bullet point, but. We just want, we just wanted to go broader.
Wanted to say, I don't know.
But you guys, I mean, staff will be involved in this process, but you guys are the ultimate recommenders and county commissioners, the ultimate approvers.
I mean, I'm just looking at the one that says working with landowners to obtain conservation easements. I can't remember which one it is, but house feel. I don't know, but all the back, the rollback.
The green belt status.
Rollback, a hundred percent of it is supposed to be used by the county for, to maintain open spaces, and that's the biggest tool. That they have to use, so, I mean. That's gonna become a big thing, cause, I mean, I don't know, maybe San Juan County doesn't have that much rollback, so it doesn't matter, but. But that is a.
Going to, um. In the last audit with the assessors, there was a lot of people claiming green belt status that should not have been in green belt. So what you're saying with the rollback, it could become a very front and center conversation.
Has to be spent that way. If the county doesn't spend that money that way in ten years, it goes to the state and the state will determine us.
And these conservation easements, like I know in Iowa, they did a bunch of wool lease, the county will lease your. Ag land. To be a wildflower filled this year, instead of growing alfalfa.
But that's what nature conservancy and like r- ratchets is.
Okay, so to, to be continued, just know it's coming, that's where we're at. Uh, and those are some of the things we highlighted as maybe conflicting or things we wanna discuss later.
Okay, we okay to move on from item two to item three? Yeah, okay, um, let's, let's move on to item three. Review and discussion of community comments in chapters one through six of the. Of the draft twenty twenty five land use ordinance. Okay, Kristen.
So, um, as we already kinda discussed, this was tabled for six months, it has been sitting for six months. While we gather more community comments, which is what was suggested by Commissioner Harvey at the January twenty first meeting. We have been collecting comments, like I said, we have a summary of those comments. Um, we've had five additional workshops, um, that were held within each community, so people did not have to travel. We have had daytime workshops, nighttime workshops, weekend workshops. Um, I have also met with people upon request whenever, Sunday morning. So anybody who wants to reach out has, has the ability to reach out. Again, at the January, July first county commission meeting last week, um. We were called upon once again to reach out to the community more. And I rebutted it a bit because I'm not sure what else we can do. And so I wanted to pose, before we dive into this, I wanted to pose a question to you, what else can we do? One comment that came from county commission was to put in a one-page flyer, which will be expensive, but we will do it for six months. Every month, a one-page flyer in the newspaper. Are there any other thoughts?
Well, so that's just notifying people of this, right? But we're, we're also hearing is that people wanna see these changes reflected in a draft version online. So if someone's on the map that wants to change from multi-use to ag, back to ag. They wanna see that, that map color change from purple to.
So with that, I cannot. I'm in a tight spot. If I just go ahead and make the changes as they come in, then people say that I'm, I'm doing it on my own. So we will continue to do these pending items. Where we summarize it, and the cutoff for this was July eighth, and we started the next one.
So when do we, a- are we gonna talk about these and say yes? Is that what we're?
And then give me a few days, and those will be reposted, but everything is up to date as of. Based on the May eighth planning commission, is the last time we talked about anything. So all of this has been, it's all updated, so I'm, I'm getting a little tired of the, it's not updated. It's updated and it's in red.
Where, so. Can I just ask what that bing- pinging is that we keep hearing? What's that noise?
So for instance kennel, kennel we updated in May. There you go. So, I don't know what else I can do.
But there's been so many things that people have requested changed.
Yeah, so we have to, we're gonna talk about it, we're gonna hear it today, we're gonna say that. Multi-use going back to ag makes sense, it's not a spot zone. We are for it, or we disagree, and this is the reasons why, and we're gonna leave it.
Somebody into the meeting, Kristen.
But I mean, Kristen can't do that, that's not her job, that's, that's our job to do that. Like, we haven't, I wasn't here in, in May, just a little bit that I read, but we haven't before that.
Like butcher shops was added. Based on the January, so these comments came from the January twenty first county commission. So anything in black is what planning commission approved.
At that meeting.
At that point in time, everything went black, anything from January on has been put in red. And there it is. So back to the original question, in what other ways? Do we reach out and have open lines of communication? What else can we do? We will do it.
I don't really think that's the issue as much as demonstrating that the public is getting heard. With these changes, so seeing those red lines, seeing it in the draft is gonna mean everything. And so then people can share with each other, yes, my change is on there, look, it's right here.
This list is included in the packet each month as well.
So, so Kristen, so are you going to type into this document? Sort of how we, what we think about these different things now?
Update the land use right now. In the document in red.
Okay, so with all of these, all of these questions we've had from community members. The ones that are captured in there.
So we're actually gonna be in, in the land use document and in the use table tonight, updating it live. Me a day or two to get it published on the website.
And it will be red?
It will be red.
So I guess we'd need to notify people, hey, go and check and see if your request was granted.
Anything else we have?
Well, I guess, I don't really have a good idea to get more input, but I would just say the input that I get, that I really like. Is that specific input, like the butcher shop. If that's missed, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to miss butcher shops, we need butcher shops, we need them. You know, like, they don't need to be next to my house, hopefully, but we need them, let's, let's put them in, let's define them, let's get it done. Well, I got a lot, but, but anyways, those, those are really, you know, like we had, um, just another example, sorry to take the time, but it's like. We didn't specify grazing industrial like around White Mesa Mill. You know, like absolutely, graze cattle there, that needs to be there, we missed it, we didn't know, that's a great comment, it was changed. You know, like those are things that I want to do, I don't, I just, I feel like, I just hate the. And I, maybe I shouldn't go, but it's just like, well, this is taking, like, tell me something, tell me something, and I'm taking. I'm doing, cause I'm not, I swear to you, like. I wanna make it more user friendly, so give me some good advice, good ways to do that, and I will do my best, that's all I can promise for you. I will do my best to understand your comments and apply them, but.
We have the public notice instructions, that was a comment tonight, it is here, thank you Anne for putting together this. Um, they've also made it even easier on the website, at the bottom of every public notice, you can, you can click a sign up. That's pretty slick. But, there's that, we can send that out in a, in a newspaper, one-page flyer. To try to pitch, please sign up for public notices.
That's a good idea.
Um, I've done a lot more work on this to be like, here's our next planning commission, here's the, here's the public notice. Here's the whole meeting packet for tonight, you can see everything, including the list of changes.
Nice job, Kristen.
Packages are getting ginormous.
So.
So on that page, it says, uh, you may send written. Comments at any time to planning commission at San Juan County Utah dot gov, is anybody getting anything from that?
No, I just get the ones Kristen forwards.
Right, and I thought the idea was that this goes directly to all of us.
It does.
In real time.
It does, so it won't, you don't have a login to planning commission, you have a login to your email. Your email is part of planning commission. So when those, when somebody types in planning commission at San Juan County Utah dot gov. It shows up on your email.
But it's, no, it, it shows up with your name.
So I forward everything I get. You get things directly, I also get it.
So I guess what I'm saying, I don't think people are using this, if none of us are getting anything from this.
You might get double duty because the planning commission, I'm also on that list, and so I, it might ding you twice.
Have you been getting emails from planning commission at San Juan County Utah dot gov?
I wouldn't know because it shows up as K Bushnell.
You're saying that the from line shows up from you.
Yeah, so all of ours still show up as.
Yeah, she's forwarding.
It's the two line, but what I'm saying is.
Some of those I get are doubles. I noticed the other day, cause I, I'm like, I just read that.
I just forward everything, I, I timestamped the person, I have received it, and I forward you. Their comments and my acknowledgement that we received it and it was forwarded, that way there is.
That I agree with, I'm getting those from you, but along, I think what Anne is saying, and I'm in the same boat, I don't think I'm getting anything from.
Directly from people.
Directly from planning commission.
Right, so we need to make sure the public knows that if they want to email.
I got something from Nancy. That's right, I thought, who's Nancy?
I mean, it's easier, this just goes.
Yeah.
So it is, we've done tests and it should be working, but what you're saying is the com- the community needs to be.
Community, so that, that email address needs to be publicized.
So do you, we'll put that in the newspaper.
Well, that was the intent of creating that in the first place, was that you would not be the gatekeeper. Of all of those emails and having the responsibility of remembering to forward, 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 or you know, missing something.
Everything is, everything we get is logged. Logged, forwarded, and, and kept forever.
But it shouldn't have to be forwarded if people are writing to that. Yeah, if they choose to just write to Kristen.
Well, I also get planning commission. Because I have, I have to keep all the documents for Grandma.
I think we're good.
Do we want to take, I'm about to paint my pants.
Five minute break, five minute break. I'm gonna eat some more.
We don't, well, you, we don't, unless I choose. Can, but everybody's gonna get it, so there's, you know, I mean, I don't know if you need to personalize it, but. Yeah. Yeah, yeah, I think Sylvia has said in the past.
Has this been changed? So July first, they did have a meeting?
I don't think that occurred, did y'all have a work session meeting? No, you didn't talk about the.
So the plat team, who's the plat team?
It sounds like it's road commissions, health commission, it's.
With the commission? And, and, and that meeting doesn't happen, so this whole thing's gonna get shifted in terms of dates?
This was the first time.
So, the way it's supposed to work is. Doing these, and we are doing them. So both groups are doing them each month, that's my understanding.
So, so my concern is this, when you guys do all you're doing. My, my self-portrait job is to take it out in public and explain it.
Well, so, so the way I understood what's gonna happen is, so this is gonna be like your line.
Starting to go over the requests of the use table.
Right. No, I think, I think that's, I think that's built into this. That's mine, you know, it doesn't look like there's a space set aside for that, like follow-up feedback. But I think that's built into this.
There's not been any. You came to the most, uh, contentious planning commission meeting ever, I was scared.
Well, let me follow up with Kristen about a good way to incorporate that. How handle, it's really how handle feedback from the changes that we made. No, I think, I think it's a good question, I'll ask her.
I suspect they'll get him through school, grandguy.
Should we check on Trent?
No, you, did you text her?
I did not see that coming, I did not realize that buttons, I didn't realize the buttons were getting pushed until too late. I mean, like until, yeah, that's unfortunate.
Did he write to us at all?
Or not that I've gotten anyways. This was one of the worst days at work I've had. Well, and then the fire, right? Heard about fires. And then, this, I'm like, wow.
So, Upper Two Mile, how many acres do they have?
I don't have an estimate, honestly.
And I first, I mean, it must've started like, what, three or four?
One thirty.
A one thirty? Cause by the time I actually saw it. It looked like a white cloud. You know, but it was odd looking, so you knew it was not right, it was not right. The lower was all gray. Sky, oh my gosh, the drive here was so horrible.
Oh, I just got one. Did you?
It is hot. Start opening the windows?
We can't.
Oh, that's right.
Safe to protocol, so I can't turn myself on.
People jump out, yeah.
Meeting was almost over, I went outside and the door is locked, I couldn't get back. They saw me and opened the door. I didn't have my phone either.
We already had a shot at.
Yeah, we missed it.
Okay, so, what I would suggest, cause we're already approaching nine o'clock on our first item, second item in discussion. If.
Take the first half of that page?
Well, let's just rapid fire what we can, yes, no, if anything starts to get into a huge debate, let's throw it on next meeting. Be good with that?
Yep, let's go.
Sure.
Okay, so what are we doing?
We're just gonna rapid fire whatever we can.
If there's kind of a consensus.
We'll just bump it to next.
Sounds good, but we need to spend more than three seconds on every one of these. I mean. There's gotta be some context here.
Sure, yeah, I agree.
All right, should we just go through it? Okay, raceways, as I was driving past Bull Hollow, I realized we did not address this. Raceways would include, um. Not only like motorcycle dirt bike raceways, it would also include something like if anybody's ever been out to Rock Mountain Raceway up in. Twilla, Greensville, um, it would also include horse raceways, do we wanna separate them? Do we like it?
Is it conditional, or is it just?
What do you wanna make it?
I hate conditional, but in this case, I'd probably go for conditional, that it ought to be conditional.
So do we even have raceways to begin with on the use table?
We do not have it.
So you're adding it to the use table and design- designating which zones, and one will be ag, conditional, what other zones?
Industrial?
Yes.
You wanna do industrial?
Yeah.
Might as well be multi-use.
But that would need to be conditional.
Yeah, absolutely.
But this is where the zoning map is really important, because right now, we've got a lot of purple. And if we're looking at decreasing that purple, which is where I would like to go, or which is what I think we need to go. Based on the public's input, is decreasing that purple, putting things back in ag, then we're gonna look at. What's left? And are those purple areas appropriate for a raceway?
So it's m- multi-use now?
Now you have to also keep in mind the feasibility of this, people cannot build a raceway on a quarter acre lot. So you're gonna have to have huge.
Well, but you could do it on. Well, but you could do it on, you could do it fairly small.
There is the go-kart, would the go-kart raceway count? Or is it? Right there. Go-kart raceway. Does that count as raceway? I would assume so, yes.
I assume so. But I'd also, I mean.
How about the raceway at the old airport, out there in Spanish Valley, what is that?
Uh, that's just a midnight raceway.
Yeah.
But it could, this one?
Uh.
There's, no, this is old airport, this is Sky Ranch.
So it's community commercial, I think.
Yep.
So conditional, let's say somebody wants to do something like Rocky Mountain Raceway, where you have nitro funny cars going down, right? Probably a conditional use consideration to not have nitro funny cars in the back of those houses. But if somebody wanted to do a horse track right here, big arena, cool.
So consensus, are we moving on, are we good?
Yeah, so where's the sheet, that, where's the update? Okay. So it's conditional a- in all of those zones?
Yep. Okay, equipment rental and storage to be added, we missed that. Um, I think it should just be permitted, um, ag, what else do you wanna see equipment rental and storage in?
Multi-use highway commercial?
How about community commercial, like your little storage facilities?
You know, and what, you know, what about rec support? If you have your boat, you wanna rent a boat?
That, yeah, that's down somewhere else on the list, or maybe we already updated it.
I mean, hence, hence the problem of a smaller ordinance, like, so what is the definition of? Rental equipment? What is the definition of, I mean, cause that's where we always get in trouble, I mean, I'm thinking rental equipment. You know, you could, it could be a air raider to a track hole.
Right.
You know, I mean, it's a huge, yeah, it's.
Well, I guess there's, okay, let's say somebody has boat storage at rec support. And then somebody has bounce house storage at rec support, does that really change? No, they couldn't do hazardous, that's a different category. So you can't be storing fuel in said shed, but.
Bounce house is one of those houses you go in and bounce?
Yeah.
How is that, how is that related to equipment rental and storage?
I don't.
It's part of equipment.
Example?
Well, I'm thinking like, equipment rental, uh, let's do ATVs. ATV is equipment rental.
See, I'm fine, but maybe Spanish Valley is not. I, I don't know, that's what, that's, that's the trick.
It's the lot sizes that, cause we have multiple use that are quarter acre lots, um.
I do think, I'm trying to think of the small businesses up there in Spanish Valley, I do think you probably have some of the equipment rental places. Would U-Haul would, like sm- I'm thinking of small U-Haul, like we've got the one in Blanding, well, he's not there anymore.
Bronco rentals.
Those would probably go under automobile, at some point you cross into automobile sells and rentals.
So, this always just brings me back to the original thing that I said the first time we were doing this with the use table is, how are we supposed to know? We need to be looking at what other counties are doing when it comes to equipment rental and storage, like, how are they regulating that? How are they defining that? How are, what zones are they putting it in? Um, like, we're inventing, like, we're doing this, like, we. We don't have any guidance, meaning there's, this has already been done in somebody else's ordinance.
I think this one's pretty.
On the fly, that just doesn't make sense to me.
I think this one's pretty mellow in the fact that everything's gonna have to be, as per like, building code, everything's gonna have to be enclosed within the building or the shed or.
Not necessarily, I mean.
I mean, the ATV rental, is that under automobile at that point? Or would that be under equipment? So.
So I feel like this one, we need a flag, um, cause it's a very po- um, popular. Commercial business in the, our county.
Yeah.
And counties around us, so we're definitely gonna have people wanting to do storage on their land. And is that harmonious, compatible, whatever with?
I always kinda lean on the side of allow it, you know, like, let them, I mean.
I know, that's what the county's been doing, and now we're in this position.
But the county likes, that's what they've been, we've been doing, and the county likes, they don't want, we don't wanna take that away from them, I mean. I mean, you're not gonna, you're not gonna get everybody, you're gonna have, I'm gonna have the, you know, the whatever, the. Butcher shop in my backyard, not really, but I mean, like, I can't, just, that's just how things go, I mean, it. You can't, you can't. Limit everything in hopes that you get everything right, you just give, give people as much freedom to make good choices as possible.
And again, it wouldn't, we could put in a disclaimer that the equipment cannot be a hazardous, so that might outrule your chainsaws and stuff, because they have fuel.
But.
Your ATVs would have fuel.
No, 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 I don't like that at all. Hazardous, any, anything that starts, I mean, like, I mean, just let it go. But that's my thought, we can do whatever, we can bring it back again.
I think we need other people to weigh in.
Let's start there, and I'll, I'll put, define what equipment is for next meeting.
Okay, let's go to the next one.
Okay, event centers, such as wedding venues and conferences.
Everywhere, all over the place.
What?
No, serious, why not?
I mean, there's some really classy.
What's wrong with a wedding or a conference?
Well, think of it this way, like.
If you live in Coronado, on Coronado, I mean, I have to go from the Spanish Valley perspective, I'm like, can't, you know, not, but.
I hear you.
People have short-term rentals over there, that house, there's a really large house, then they can have reunions there right now, as we speak. We don't need more of that, it's already a nuisance, that one house.
That gets in there with overnight rental.
But, but, still, I mean, that's the kind of parties that can happen in a residential area, if we go Cody's route and say across the board.
I like a good party every other weekend, not every weekend, but.
Man, I know, I know that we've, we, we cuss the Spanish Valley ordinance up and down, right? And it is terrible, and we'd like to get rid of it for obvious reasons. But could we solve this problem by just adding another zone?
Because I, I totally get where Anne's.
By adding Spanish Valley residential, or whatever it is, whatever you wanna call it, residential, okay, just for argument's sake. And restrict it the way that a, a lot of our Spanish Valley friends here have indicated they would like to have it governed, right?
I just don't think that rural residential is any different from.
See, and that's where I dis.
Spanish Valley residence.
That's where I disagree, I think that the proposed residential areas in the rest of the county should probably have a different set of ordinances. That very much mirror how residential is now, maybe with a few more, a few less restrictions. But that obviously doesn't work for Spanish Valley, right? So if we, if, I think, I feel like the simplest thing here is just to add another zone and another thing on our use table. That is a true residential zone that we don't screw with, and add to, like we have with our current residential.
Why don't we just dissolve, you have these two spots, you have Elk Meadows, and you have LaSalle.
Yeah.
Those are the only two spots with residential, so why don't we dissolve this into ag or multi-use? And why don't we dissolve this into ag or multi-use?
Well, can't be ag.
I thought people wanted, people have been requesting rural residential to come back.
I was gonna say, Elk Meadows people have come in a hundred times and be like, well, we want to do, you know, like, we want to limit this, we.
If we do something like that, we're gonna have to reevaluate our density standards, because I think acts out of five acre minimum right now, ten?
Proposed ten, yeah.
Oh my god, thanks Sam. You're the man. Okay, let's, uh.
I, I, I know that's a big hairy topic, right? But, but honestly, I think it might be a solution for us and solve a lot of heartburn.
I said that a couple meetings ago, I feel like Anne and I would get along a lot better, really, because I, I, I truly am, like, I don't see. Blanding, Monticello, I assume, the Dude Ranch, the. Like, a reception, or a reunion, or, you know, even like, the Fourth of July, kinda in blending, out of blending, it's. Pull the camper up on the, on the street.
Yeah, and I don't see a problem with that either for those other incorporated.
I don't love it, TC.
I know you don't.
I don't love it because. Simple is clear and clean, and people can understand, and now if you have two different resi- even just two different tags of residential. People are gonna be like, well, wait, hold on, I don't know which rules I follow.
I don't think that's a strong enough argument not to do it.
Have a lot of.
We need to give people more credit, there's ways you can color code things to demonstrate that this is different.
Find where they live on this map.
Well, their friends and neighbors can help them.
So I, I hear you, but I'm just like, I can see where that is gonna really confuse people.
I think I disagree with you, respectfully.
I'll, I'll go with it. I am, but your guise is part in the game of life.
I think it'll solve a lot of our problems.
Okay, I will put it on next meeting.
Thank you.
I don't love it. All right, event centers, going off of. Just considering residential at the time, if we do add a new zone, we'll go through and decide what to do with that. But going off of what we have now. What would you?
Where is it permitted now?
We don't have event centers on this.
Not at all.
No.
Rural residential.
I think, I think highway commercial.
Highway commercial.
I think community commercial.
Uh-huh, multi-use, industrial.
Do we want it in multi-use?
Yes, yes, that's my, my thing with.
Industrial.
Yeah.
Uh, it says confer- doesn't it say conferences, too? And rec support.
Everywhere.
Okay, except for residential.
Yep.
Okay.
Cool with that? I mean, I know you've got some M U up there right now, but.
It's not January yet.
We just need to redefine our definition of apiary. Um, again, we're trying to get it across to people that. Everything that Shannon wants with homesteading, you can do all of it. If we start to tap into, can I do home canning? Can I do home bread making? Can I do home truffles? Can I do what didn't we think of? And so, that is a road I do not wanna go down. If you are under cottage industry, do it. Do not care. Now, as soon as your truffle factory goes from your kitchen to a. Thirty thousand square foot conveyor belt system, you are now commercial, and you need to find a location that promotes. Truffle factories.
So the person who wrote this email, it wasn't, it was about big, big businesses bringing in.
Oh, this is a trucking and hives.
This is in the truckin', this is the trucking and hives email.
I, I don't think we touch it, because they're temporary, it's a temporary thing. So like, eh, on your way to Cortez, we have the bee rancher, what do you wanna call him, bee farmer? At his location, his home location, yes, we need to zone that for aviary. But I don't think it's feasible for us to be able to zone where he takes his trucks. You know what I mean?
Yeah.
I'm fine for bees everywhere, I don't know what we're doing here, some of this is getting.
But I, I agree with you, I don't think we should try to touch each and every little, but what, but I.
What did the person request?
The issue that we do have, though, is, like you mentioned, how do you, how do we define the, the, when you make that jump from a cottage industry to an industrial?
Well, and that's where I think that ordinance that I.
I wanna use an example, but I get in trouble when I use examples, but. So I'll be general, so the hemp farm, or the marijuana farm, right, so, they're growing. I don't know, it's probably multi-use, or would be multi-use, depending on wherever you wanna think they are. But then they have, they have, you know, a, a shop, a, a building where they do their processing. I'm fine with that building, there's nothing wrong with that building in multi-use, or ag, or industrial. Highway commercial. I mean, but I don't, so I just don't know when that, where's that jump, you know, from?
So it's, the state of Utah has definitions for cottage industry that I think we just go with what state of Utah.
So what is that? Tell me what a cottage industry is.
So it's any home-based business.
Well, so that's the one, the, that ordinance, I don't know if you guys read it, but it's, it's very clear about the cla- categories. Class one or class two, why not? That's the def- the thing that changes it into a commercial.
I mean, we have, we have the three points in place now, so, do you have public parking out front? Do you have a sign on the exterior of your building, and is there a point of sell on premise? If you have those three, you are now a public space.
That's a pretty low bar, though.
Mm-hmm.
Really low bar.
Yeah, that, that cuts out a lot of home bases.
Long ways between there and a, and a industrialized facility.
Sure, but I'll, I'll use my own example.
Okay.
So I farm and sell, Melissa buys from me every Wednesday, thanks for your support. It is not going to provide for me and my family, it's costing me a lot of money to grow arugula. So, I do not sell on my property. Because my neighbor did not like people driving past her house, creating dust on her road. So I pack everything up in coolers and sell out of the back of the truck on somebody else's property along the highway. That I have permission to be there. So that, that is where we do have to drive it behind. I, I am not a huge operation, I am two coolers. There are not a ton of people coming to my house, but it was enough that my neighbor was like, I do not like people driving up there just for.
But you can limit how many cars, how much traffic.
But how do we manage that?
It's, that, there's a business license issue, and then it becomes a nuisance, and then they lose their business license, and they can no longer do it.
I just think that was.
Did you read the Sandy ordinance?
Yeah.
Did anybody read the Sandy home-based business ordinance?
I did, but I just think like.
Useful.
It turn- it turns it into more of a civil matter, rather than a county scotch covered. And we can go that route, if you wanna be like, we're gonna be hands off, and if your neighbor wants to call you in as a nuisance, they can go for it.
But we need a way to have people come to the county for a business license, and do it legitimately. And that's why I'm saying we need an ordinance for a home-based business, that has parameters for what.
So let's, let's put that on the next one, cottage industry definitions and home-based business.
Now, I, I wanna go back to the bees, because people did write to us about that.
Yeah.
So, Grand County has an ordinance that says, um. Migratory beekeeping operations south of Interstate forty, either permanent or temporary, will be prohibited. No parcel of land south of Interstate, oh, Interstate seventy, shall have an excess of twenty-five established bee colonies at any given time.
So twenty-five's our cap, so we could put that in the definitions, or we could set a cap for whatever we wanna guess.
Or we could make it condition, I would make it conditional as well.
Well, keep in mind, conditional means you can do it.
Right, with lim- and we've just limited the size to whatever that, what was it, a state?
It says twenty-five established, no, sh- nobody can have an excess of twenty-five.
Twenty-five's, I do beekeeping, the most I've ever had is six, and that's a lot of bees. Twenty-five is a lot.
Well, this is, this is what they're afraid of.
There is some Utah State Code on beekeeping, I'll look more into this, I, I think these are, uh. Inspections, and you have to register. So right now, I'll work with, um, USU has an aviary outreach, and we could ask them. All right, so for next time, I don't wanna kick too many things to next time, but, next time. Um, allow auto sells and rentals and. Um allow auto sells and rentals in MU.
Let's look at our use table.
So there it is. Automobiles sells and rentals. We've got in highway commercial, community commercial and industrial.
I don't have a problem with that. I can't see it any problem, but again, what do I know?
Add it to MU, we're good with that?
Yes.
I think we've got a scenario where that's actually someone's doing that. And they would become non-conforming, right?
I believe so.
Okay, we have a request for bees everywhere. I'm not sure if they're referring to it home-based. I'm I'm pretty sure this one was referencing like, can I keep bees? And that would be a, that's a private use, that's not a commercial use. So I'm gonna say this one is. Resolved. And we'll address the one up above. Um junk yards in all categories except for rec.
I don't think that would.
Come on, not in residential?
Yeah, that is. Uh but I'm curious what that person's reasoning is, like why?
So so what it says is, um what he says is, um. Okay. Junk has a lot of good old stuff in it.
Oh, this is why we need to grow residential back.
This so so if you have to make repairs to broken equipment, you wanna be able to go and find something in your junk pile. That's basically his argument.
Right, so that's great. If you're in residential, that is a large acreage, but if you're in a quarter acre lot, that's.
Well, I also think there's, again, keeping the commercial slash private in mind. If I have a clunker car or two out back. That I'm pulling parts off of, that is different than a salvage yard.
Correct, but I think that our proposed ordinance had like number limits on the amount of junk cars. You could have.
Right now, it's only conditional and industrial. Well, that that it has to be allowed or conditional in more places than just industrial. Cause that really doesn't even fit the definition of industrial.
Exchange processed or dismantled.
In junk yard.
So that would require a business permit. If it's above a certain size.
Yeah, this is not like your ag. You know, a lot of people have an ag yard where you keep your sprinkler lines and your old motors and whatever.
But it still doesn't. Work in residential unless we had RR. That could work.
So here we go, junk includes, this is where junk includes but is not limited in tires, furniture, tools. Paper rags, plastics, cordage, scrap iron or other metal. Glass building materials, machinery and appliances or parts thereof, brush. Wood and lumber, solid waste vehicle parts thereof. I I think we leave this one alone and leave it in industrial. And you know, if it, this is one that civilly people can call in their neighbor.
But wait, but wait, industrial.
Yeah, that that's another topic that we need to address.
There's no industrial.
I mean, basically all we've got is milk.
So I'm just saying, let's here, I'm gonna, I'll use a name, we'll get in trouble, or let's just say.
Don't know names.
South of landing, there's auto, there's an auto shop.
Sure.
Okay, they they tow wrecked vehicles, they're there. The insurance company either fixes them or they. You know, they they sell them back or all that whole process. And then they take parts off of them and then their yard gets full and they crush it and then goes to scrap. So they would be non-compliant. They ought to, they ought to be allowed in.
How about highway, highway, commercial and ag?
Highway, commercial and ag.
Conditional?
I think there should be conditional in highway, commercial, ag and multi-use.
Uh I don't like, I don't love.
Show me a multi-use like what is hmm what is north of landing? That's multi-use, correct?
Well, like without using many names, we do have a metal scrapper up in this neck of the woods in.
And what is.
We get called about it a lot.
But so what? What's wrong with that?
I'm gonna go out on a limb here and say this, well, it's kind of light along the side of the road as you enter into the city of Blanding.
Well, I know a lot of, a lot of places though, well, I drive by LaSalle Junction. That looks like glide to me.
It is.
It's his, it's his highway commercial property.
It's not all. We'll talk later.
No, I know, I I know what you're, I know what you're saying, but on the same hand. We're gonna make some of these people. I mean, I don't wanna take anybody's business away. I really don't.
We can, so he can come in as non-conforming, but what I'm saying is we would prefer not to see that in the future. So if we bring in said scrapyard into non-conforming, it's there, right? But at some point, we would maybe like that to be a little bit different of a. Organization or company or something along some prime real estate along the highway.
I just don't think we can micromanage that much.
That's that's me, like it's it's not for me to say, it's like how many people have we had?
At least the whole county, but.
You want multi-use? That's what you're saying?
I enjoy a can of worms, I guess.
And that works for you, Cody, great, but there's too much purple in Spanish Valley that that would not work.
I mean, you could be.
Okay, sexually oriented businesses was called to be limited to just a minimum.
That that's all, well, she wants it gone altogether.
Well, sexual businesses are not sexually oriented businesses.
I get that, the way we defined it.
Allow prostitution. But we can have strip clubs and escort services.
But if, yeah, right, so it's an escort service. Um she's saying that the the county does not have to allow it.
What did the lawyers weigh it like? Jen said, where did we land on that one? Cause we're getting from one. Persons that we have to have it and from someone else, we're saying, no, maybe we don't.
There's a variety of this type of business. Um there was discussion, I think in a prior meeting about whether it's required to be allowed or not. If you look at the uh state statutes, it it would appear that you. Don't have to issue a business license to one of these types of places, but I think the court decisions have some. More or less free speech type constitutional rights that you have to allow because it's an expressive type. Uh and 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 I'm talking about a place that maybe has, you know, dancing and so forth, not, you know what I mean? So. Uh my recommendation is that you you don't try to prohibit, but you try to. Say where it happens and whatever restrictions you think are appropriate, then. You you know, you have, you have some authority to limit where it's located and. To a degree, the types of stuff that go up, goes on there.
Sounds like something we could pull from another county.
Well, and there have been.
Yeah, there would be lots of examples out there.
Almost, almost everyone in the state of Utah has limited it to just industrial. Our problem with that is we don't have very much industrial. So then are we now prohibiting people based on the fact that we put it in a zone that doesn't exist?
Well, we're prohibiting all of the other things on the use table that we're throwing in industrial, cause we're not allowing for much opportunity there either. Not that I'm arguing for sexually oriented businesses, but.
But that's, I think that was part of our discussion of why we also opened up highway commercial.
I, my only comment would be that industrial, you're basically not allowing it. It's never gonna be put in any of those industrial areas in the county, so why don't we just not allow it?
Because we need to find more places in the county that is industrial zoned for things that we want to be in industrial.
I I I don't disagree with that.
So so eventually, we're gonna have to designate some more industrial areas. And so we're essentially by trying to promote, you know, our ideal industrial use. We're also would be opening it up to sexually oriented businesses. In a, I mean, kinda inadvertently, but the goal is to have more industrial for our future truck stops and. You know, so things are sighted better industrially, cause literally we only have that one spot. Are there other places? So like this is another important topic I think we need to cover. On a future agenda is where else can we put industrial in this county?
Okay, so let's talk about that next meeting. What do we wanna do about sexually oriented businesses as it stands?
I think we'll leave it. Is my vote.
The way it is right now, conditional and highway, commercial and permitted and industrial.
What was the comment behind it? I didn't read a comment.
Oh shit, it's it's a morals, it's a morals thing.
Shouldn't be allowed?
Shouldn't be allowed.
But it's conditional on highway commercial?
No, his, I thought his question had to do with.
Two different questions.
We had two different questions.
It's conditional and highway, commercial and permitted and industrial.
So I think we should remove the conditional and highway, commercial, just not permit it there.
Agreed.
Do, wait.
She's talking about get rid of the C.
Get rid of the C.
Get it out of the commercial.
Or just industrial?
Just industrial permitted.
Why not? Can't you do conditional and industrial? I mean, that's the ultimate restrictive move.
Yeah, you could.
If if the goal of the county is to restrict it ultimately, then make it conditional.
What's the goal of one person to restrict it? Right, I mean, I don't.
Oh, maybe we need to survey on this one.
Leave it. What are you for?
I I'm fine with it permitted in industrial.
And conditional and highway.
Uh yeah, I I'm fine with it.
I'm fine with it that way. Giving people, I mean, I don't. I I just think. I don't know what I think. But I mean, I I think it's probably fine, conditional. But it's also fine, I don't care. It's kinda like alcohol and blending. I like the people vote on it. They put it on the ballot, it's still dry. You know, you do it for twenty years, it comes back on the ballot. And then this is kinda one of those things. I don't necessarily care.
Well, it doesn't, it's not gonna.
Will of the people and I don't.
If somebody, so if we went the route of making it not permitted in highway, commercial at all, just permitted in industrial. Then someday down the line, if somebody wants to come to San Juan County. And do a sexually oriented business, they can petition the county to have a rezone done. So that they can, you know, they can do it.
Really hard for somebody to rezone to industrial due to the nature of what else could be an industrial with. Chemicals and hazards and so I think.
It's not gonna hurt us to not permit it in highway, commercial, cause we're meeting the minimum requirement of permitting it somewhere. And then the uh if it comes, you know, up in the future, we can address it in the future, but it I don't think sexually oriented businesses are. Are clamoring to come.
Feasibility argument.
It it is, and so it by just not permitting it in highway, commercial, we can even more restrict it.
I will tell you right now, there is an idea to have one in Spanish Valley.
But so I even based on that alone, I don't think there's enough evidence to allow it. So that's why you're arguing for it. To be conditional and highway commercial. It seems like such a no-brainer to me that we just don't permit it in highway, commercial. We've met the requirement. We've got it in industrial, let's move on. It's just not.
I just think, I mean.
Something that's gonna bring a lot of value to our county in any way or form, really.
I don't think anything's gonna move on this use anytime soon. And I kinda agree with Cody in that, because we don't have any industrial zoning that is viable. We have. It could be argued that we have.
Well, then let's fight that battle when we get there. I just don't think you're gonna really have.
I'm I'm fine. Let's just, let's just make it industrial. That's, I mean, I really don't.
Permit it in industrial.
The public has weighed in on this one, we need to.
Yeah.
That's fine.
It's just not where.
I I would also be fine with it's not allowed anywhere.
Okay, equine services and equine boarding. I feel like we already have this one.
Oh, we did too.
Covered with stables and boarding stalls. So I'm gonna say this one's already done.
Add it to what though? Let we go back to the use table real quick?
Well, they're saying, sorry, I'm dying.
You're fine.
They're saying they want this use added, but we've already got. Dying boarding stall, stables arenas.
Hmm, maybe that there's a definition.
Let's say I'm doing horse lessons as a commercial business. That was gonna be covered under.
So there's only two differences.
I'm looking, I'm looking for it.
Cause I'm thinking, I'm thinking of one that's would be highway, commercial. I mean, I assume they're probably a. They would call themselves a. I guess, I don't know. I said, I don't wanna take anything away from anybody if that's what they're already doing.
The only place it shouldn't be, in my opinion, would be a Spanish Valley residential.
Well, again, if I am taking.
Enough.
If I'm taking horse back riding lessons out of somebody's home. That's probably a cottage industry.
Sure.
Does that cover what you're thinking?
Well, yeah, I guess. I mean, yeah, that's, well, or they train horses, they they train burdle, burdle racing horses.
Sure.
So.
Where's the email?
I'm looking for it.
I know Kristen should have the email.
We've got horse trainers all over the county. I.
We do.
I don't feel like that's.
Again, we're back to the definition of commercial.
Yeah, so I feel like it's, I think it's covered.
Let's move on so we can do something today at home before midnight.
Clinic, medical, dental needs.
Yeah, it doesn't have mental health therapy in there. It needs to say health, healthcare or something. Well, a clinic, so clinic, instead of saying medical slash dental, it should just say healthcare, healthcare services. Healthcare services.
It could be dental chiropractor.
Right.
Um sawmill and firewood bank. So sawmills, are they an ag? Silviculture is already permitted in ag.
Where's that not permitted?
It is not permitted in highway, commercial, community, commercial, industrial or rec support. We should probably allow it in rec, in industrial.
Yeah, do that, move on.
Okay. Homesteading to the use table.
Let's, let's talk about that at another meeting.
Okay, zoning maps. I'm gonna, that, I'm gonna move this one, cause that's a big conversation.
Good idea.
Okay, that next one is a gal here in Monticello. Oh, not that one. No, not that one, then the next one after that.
We've got a couple long um sunny acres. That, I mean, we've got, we might wanna look at that one with a fine tooth comb, cause we've got people for residential. I've got people that want short-term rentals. So sunny acres is kind of a hot topic. Okay, so we'll address that one next time and we'll address that one next time.
So this next one, this gal MP, she has a, she has a school outs just in.
Or a school.
Here in Monticello. And it's not allowed in ag and she's being zoned ag.
Okay, so do we wanna? Okay, so do we wanna just allow? Private educational facilities in ag?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, thank you.
Um, this is a up in Marion Court. It's right here. Wait, no, sorry, Marion Court, sorry, sorry. Marion Court is one of the kerfuffles that we want to dodge in the future. We have a cul-de-sac of homes along highway commercial. It's extremely dangerous, there isn't a turn lane, et cetera. So I would say this is not an ideal situation.
What do they want?
They would like to go to multi-use, which I feel okay about because we can, you know, pass into what's going on there.
So yeah, just to reiterate my proposal that. I wish Lloyd was here to troubleshoot this, but. From sunny acres down, could all be multiple use.
Right here?
Yeah, well, keep going even. All the way down to Old Airport, maybe even a little further.
So, but then where are you reserving highway commercials that we don't?
For the bigger lots that are not developed and already. Um, have an established use, the multiple uses the cat will catch, will help zone them in compliance.
I feel with the love.
And there's smaller lots there, and then highway commercial can be the larger lots that have yet to be.
Loves conundrum, we need to reserve some highway commercial.
Well, I'm not saying we won't have any, but we don't need, there's not a lot of buildable space and that's kinda one of the problems with loves is why.
All sitla.
But there's not a lot of buildable space for a large highway commercial thing, except maybe on the west side.
Well.
But as far as the private property that's non-sitla, eh that's in highway commercial on the east side of the highway, multiple use. Would zone everybody in, um, compliance and it. They're all small lots, like there's not a, I mean, I don't see what you can't do in multiple use that you you could do in highway commercial. Cause highway commercial is really more focused on larger lot development and these are all smaller parcels.
Yeah, so whatever, maybe let's open up that discussion next time. I would like to get these guys.
Okay.
Marion Court into multi-use, just that, that chunk.
I'm just saying, so if you, if you wanna do that, though, it starts to open that argument that I'm just making, you know?
So we'll address that argument next time.
I think that's fine, change them and we'll talk about the rest. Anne, is that alright?
Yeah. Just getting y'all to think about that.
Okay, I'm gonna have to follow up on who this is. I think this has already been addressed. If they want to keep their property ag, I think that's already addressed.
Well, that's, I mean, but that's what I'm saying, with people need to see that the map color of their lot is changing.
Let me all, let me find out. Let me track that down for a parcel number.
You don't have any idea where that is, don't you? Okay.
But but I mean, we can't really make that decision unless we look at, we know what we're talking about here.
And I don't know what they're talking about here, cause they didn't include any information.
So we're gonna come back and visit that one?
Okay, so wants to be ag with cabinet shop as a permitted use, so let's do, there's two different issues here.
Yeah, so it should be.
Cabinet shop permitted for ag. I'm okay with that.
Yeah.
Yep.
And I'll have to look up their parcel information. So we'll get that flagged on the map for next time.
Okay.
Um, this is a in general in Spanish Valley, keep all cul-de-sacs residential. I think.
I think we need to look at Spanish Valley zoning as it's, as one thing and and. Look at the whole.
And like, what is the definition of a cul-de-sac? And I guess I just say that, cause I just live on a dead end road in the county. It's a county road. It's probably about a half mile long, but it just dead ends. I mean, it, it's not a cul-de-sac. I wouldn't consider it a cul-de-sac.
It's problematic because all the cul-de-sacs are going to. Um, be connected to one of the main.
Are you happy Wesley?
I am.
Okay, if you're not, if you come up with something and we'll discuss it, I promise.
That timer.
Well, we brought a friend who has a real difficult time sitting and she's been sitting much longer.
Thanks for coming.
Yeah.
I really, I really appreciate your help. I really appreciate and need your help. Likewise. My friend.
Okay, this is another one we'll have to check. They wanna stay in rural residential, which maybe we bring back rural residential. TC, you're gonna win this one by the end. Um. Okay, this one was on the west side of the highway. Basically what we were just looking at with a full hollow. To keep. West side of the highway from Dude Ranch to Monticello to keep ag instead of multi-use. So that would be from here versus Dude Ranch.
While you look at it, my comment would be, why? Like, I, if, if, if that is what they would like, I would like to know why. Not that they're, I mean, I just don't know. I mean, it's still eligible for green belt, you can do more in it than ag. Um, if it's a gravel pit, it has to be ag, we have to rezone it, so there doesn't. There's nothing that stops that. I.
There's a lot of small business up in here too, that I'm.
Commercial business that doesn't fit in.
With ag.
With ag? Like what? I mean, just name one. I don't know.
Like the, all the overnight rentals are easier.
Commercial, we're not, overnight rentals are not commercial. I don't think Anne's gonna.
They are, they are, uh, permitted in ag, eh?
But that's kinda like the definition of the state again, you know, like.
They're residential use.
Residential use. They're not.
But not commercial.
What's happening on this?
And commercial?
It does probably matter right now.
Okay, never mind, never mind. We'll go down that rabbit hole.
They may be down zoning themselves by going to.
I would just say if they reached out and had a good reason, I'd love to hear it, but otherwise, we're okay.
Does, do you guys know off the top of your head if the requestor is a substantial landowner through that?
Let's see, it says KP.
I'll look into it. We'll get it on the map for next time.
So I mean, we have tried to be pretty responsive to folks that have large trims land, right?
Right. Um, Peter Springs Road next to Elk Meadows. Peter Springs is right.
Near withers.
Next to Elk's Make Ag. So I'll, I'll find out exactly which property that is. Sorry, we're gonna have a lot of mapping next time. I'm gonna have to figure out whatever that one is. Um, the only ones pending that aren't on this list, they did go to county commission. Um. One right here, I wanna get cleared up. Um, all of these property owners have requested multi-use and looking at the, the bigger spectrum here, what's going on. This east alley is what you'll be going down to hit Sky Ranch, Balance Rock and Valley Estates.
Now, I think this one again is a reason we need to talk about all of the zoning. Cohesively and overall in Spanish Valley, because now you're starting to cut out more residential. And every time you turn something purple, it it messes up the whole use table. Um, and there's a lot of things on here that are nearby that are community commercial that probably shouldn't be.
What is it currently?
So, so for example, why is Lydia? Community commercial, that should be residential.
Well, we were trying to keep the road front here.
Yeah, but you can cut the road front however you want and Lydia is very clearly residential. It's set apart from the road. It's not even right on the road. There's not access directly off of Spanish Valley Road Drive. To Lydia, you have to go up Coronado to get to it. So that's what I'm just saying, it starts to become a domino effect. Cause I propose, you know, I would argue that Lydia should be residential, so now that would turn yellow and then. And now it's yellow surrounded by purple and so anyway, I think we need to revisit all of this purple and pink and.
Do an old school lamp swap.
For this one and here's why. Balance Rock is vested in being able to do overnight accommodations. And you're gonna have a lodge and you're gonna have a ton of overnight rentals.
If you start going down that road, then it's like, well, the next person, well, I'm next to them and I, they can do short term rentals and then you're like, okay, well then.
Well, it's not an ideal situation, but it is happening and that's their vested point, is that they were vested to be able to do overnight rentals. And so these guys are saying, why am I getting dinged from doing overnight rentals when you have to drive past my house to get to the lodge?
Well, that comes back to what is the county's vision for Spanish Valley and if you're gonna turn it into all nightly rentals, then that's. That's the thing, that's, you're falling into that trap, that logic.
I'm not agi- I'm not against, I want the sanctity of residential. And I always, I want.
But those people there, why do they want it? Just for short term rentals or?
They wanted it for short term rentals because they're saying you're driving past our house to go to a short term rental.
People drive by my house every day, I mean, I, that is just ludicrous argument.
Sure it's a property value thing as well.
It needs to come down to what does the, what is the vision and zone it based on that. In your vision, the county's. Administrative divi- their vision seems to be arguing for more and more short term rentals in Spanish Valley.
No, I want more and more residential.
But you're not, you're doing the opposite of that by turning your everything.
The problem with Spanish Valley is we got on board too late. And we have already approved some very large developments. They are vested, they have the overnight rental accommodations attached to them and now we're dinging everybody else. So I am very much for, let me make it very clear, I'm clear. I am so totally for single family sacred. Residential areas, but the cat is out of the bag and we cannot go backwards. So how do we plan accordingly for the future? But you're punishing, I mean, you're punishing people that both sides of them are an overnight rental. So if we could go back and do actual planning for Spanish Valley, that would be great.
So because we can't go back, we're just not going to. Fight that battle, is that what you're saying?
I'm for this guy changing it because literally he has a bunch of traffic. There's how many, like a hundred ninety-six units?
It's not happened yet either, so there's, that's another, you know, caveat.
They are moving forward.
Well, again, we're gonna revisit this ordinance again in the future and if it looks like we need to add more. Multiple use or more short term rentals or whatever, then we can do it in the future, but right now, if we, on speculation, that red. Balance Rock is going to do this giant resort thing and it's too early to, I mean, I just. We've got Sky Ranch already.
Spanish Valley next time.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, I feel like that's a whole can of worms and we need to look at.
And we're trying to get a handle on it, but it is gone. It has been a free for all. Pat Creek, I would like to go meet with them.
Going to get this ordinance passed if you make everybody in Span- if if Spanish Valley thinks that you're going to just. Turn everything into a short term rental.
That's not what we're trying to do.
But then I'm not hearing a solution. Like, I'm not hearing what you're, you're saying the cat's out of the bag, there's nothing we can do. So there, what is the opposite, what are we gonna?
Backwards on vested shares.
So all we can do is just keep zoning more people into short term rentals.
I think our best bet is to really work this area down here that's not developed yet.
Well, that doesn't help anybody that's already existing.
No, it doesn't. It doesn't.
So I think you're, I mean, that message right there is not gonna deliver well to Spanish Valley. So I'm, I think you need to change your.
This is what we.
Approach.
They didn't discuss it at all, they didn't say they wanted to or didn't want to or.
Like, our clean slate is on the southern half of the valley.
That we don't own, that's all sitla.
That, that, that.
I know, I get it, I get.
As a planning and zoning commissioner.
So we need to be trying to solve this problem.
County commissioners, I'd like their input.
Not giving up.
What do they, what do, how do they feel? I I agree with Anne probably a little more than you. Because, just because the cat's out of the bag, doesn't mean we have to, to just throw the bag away. I mean, like.
Well, we can try, get people compliant, they're gonna be non-conforming and we can try to time those out. Over a long period of time, we can try to time those out and get back to a more ideal zoning situation. But I think we're gonna, we're gonna have a lot of kickback if. We regulate it too tight and people are already in place and they are established and they. The, the biggest issue is that people cannot expand on what they have going. If it's non-conforming. So if I have a paint shop, whatever I have, that's it, that's all I get.
Yeah, and there's nothing wrong with that. If you want to expand your commercial business, move to a location that is appropriate. We can't accommodate everybody's, you know, million dollar dream for their business in the middle of my neighborhood, you know?
I will tell you, we've, we hear a lot about property rights and feedback from the community as well, right?
That's true.
And this is kinda flipping that on its head a bit. Not saying that you're wrong, I think I agree with you on this as well. TC and Anne, can I agree with Bo? But however, you know, the the flip side of that message is we, it's pretty restrictive, right?
Well, if their lot is only an acre and they're trying to do something that's. Not meeting the setbacks or is a nuisance or whatever, we have to. Protect this health, safety and welfare of this, can't let their rights impact their neighbors' rights, right? So we have to balance that all out and so people will understand, I think, that they're reasonable. That there's only so much junk you can put on your quarter acre lot, you know, or your one acre lot. In Spanish Valley and that's why I'm just saying it's a different animal and I, I think if we stopped and looked at. How, what the future is gonna be, we can zone this better than we've got it right now and that means. Another conversation for another day where we tackle it with Lloyd here, cause he's such a wealth of information about Spanish Valley. Um, and to see if we can't like do a little more micro zoning of of this area based on what's there.
Well, and you and I and Lloyd all drove it and we did talk about all the dead ends. Do we wanna make all those residential, like more micro zoning? But no one is against housing. We are all, the whole world is trying to figure out affordable housing right now. But in doing so, kind of to TC's point, like we can't. There's gonna be some places that we can salvage and there's gonna be some that we can't. And that's just, that's in the long haul. Is this neighborhood ever gonna go back to residential? Probably not. Well, then why do we wanna zone it so that more commercial could move in?
Well, I just don't, it's not fair to the residential people who moved there knowing it was residential. It's like, like the Pat Creek people. There's an HOA, it's clear.
But let's save this discussion for next time and Pat Creek for next time. Cause that one's gonna be long, long haul.
Oh, is it?
Okay, uh, we are still working on the twenty-five legislative updates, this will probably come at the tail end. Of everything we do, so those will probably come out in October, November. Um, part of that is a wild and urban interface updates. Um. There's been some updates to the pill section, so we're, we're working on getting that up to date. Um. So we had this discussion, manufactured homes currently have to be on a permanent foundation. This is probably, um, addressed as building code. I don't think that you can put a house in Utah on CMU block. Due to seismic.
But you can, you can absolutely HUD will pay and do, you can do it on, if you have the pilings. And tie downs.
Right, so you have to do, you have to do the piers with the footing and then you have the tie, the tie down straps to hold it to the footing.
That's, that's HUD approved, gov- federal government approved.
Yeah.
Yeah. That's, that's HUD approved, gov- federal government approved, yeah. But just to, no tie downs. Piers on, or on blocks. I, I don't think.
So I'm gonna say this one is addressed, I don't even think we talk. I'll, I'm gonna reference building code on this one.
Can you add a line to this, at least on this topic? That we have in our design standards that manufactured homes. Can only be so wide, it's on page sixty six.
And that's due to them getting down the highway.
Um, our, the, the single wide I live in is sixteen feet by seventy six feet. And this ordinance on page sixty six restricts. Um, manufactured homes to double wide, like it, it outzones single wides based on. Um, so if you look at number three, have a mini- minimum twenty four foot horizontal wall dimension on at least two non-opposing sides. My single wide would not be allowed according to this. Because mine is seventeen, what did I say, sixteen by seventy six?
It's just saying you have to have one, one wall has to be twenty four feet long.
Two non-opposing sides, that means, so, so my two sides that are seventy six are in compliance. But if I have to have two non-opposing sides, that means I have to have.
A twenty four by twenty four building.
Or twenty, yeah, at least twenty four by twenty four, so that outzones this single wide, which I think we need to change.
Okay.
Good catch. That's weird.
Is there a, so where, is there a maximum?
Well, good question, but wherever they copied and pasted this, remember this. But we've mentioned this many time before. And I know, we're not the only ma- single wide that is, you know, these dimensions, right?
Absolutely.
It's not.
So do you want it to go down to?
Well, I think.
Or do we just delete number three?
Let's understand why it's there, maybe first.
Right, this is why.
Cause there's no way that an ordinance should preclude a single wide trailer. And I, and I gotta think that, that's a mistake somewhere.
Uh, and Kristen, can you check the one above that it's actually, because this woman is saying that it's actually a, uh, it's HUD approved. To do it the way she's recommending it.
Well, I'm, I don't think CM, I'll, I'll look into it, I don't think.
They can be coated with fiber reinforced surface bonding cement.
Let me double check with Cory. Okay, um, currently only one allowed per lot. Recommend this is updated for one home per acre up to three per lot.
My, just thought when I saw this email, a lot of that depends on where you're at. I mean, it goes back to the acre, you know, do you have municipal water? Um, septic, how does that work? Just, so just to put that in, it doesn't apply, it couldn't apply everywhere because there's those state. Statutes that preclude that, so I don't think, I mean, we can't say different, I mean, and that's a. You know, that's a health code, so.
Well, and we are already allowing one primary resident with one ADU and we have not limited the ADUs, literally you could have two houses the same size. And I, I think that's fair, if you wanna go more than that, subdivide your properties so that there's two properties.
But is that a lot, is a manufacturer, is that a lot with manufactured homes as well in the ordinance, not just?
Yeah, we didn't, we didn't disclose.
Well, and we made it to where an ADU is almost anything, basically.
And that's not really, uh, wise, I don't think, cause that's not the intent of an ADU.
Agree, I don't really like what we did there.
And we could put in ADU restrictions, like Grand County has some pretty tight ADU restrictions.
Well, I would.
We, we didn't, we just said you can have one ADU and one primary residence.
A lot of that was Lloyd, honestly, and probably TC, like, I'm, I, I don't, I don't know if I wanna revisit it. I'm just saying that.
No, but I'm kind of, man, on this current one, I, I kind of feel the opposite, I mean. Uh, what they're asking for is. One per acre up to three on a lot.
So if you have three acres, you could do three manufactured.
Yeah, or if you have an acre and a half, you'd also do three, yes?
No.
No, no.
It's one, one per acre, if you have a lot.
Three per lot.
Yeah, wait.
So if you have a two acre lot.
You could do two.
And an ADU.
Why not three, so it's three per lot.
Two eighty, eighties.
You, but, but it's, you have to.
This would cover, that's where we're already covered with the ADU.
So if you could have a fifty acre lot and you could put three on on it.
Right.
So it's, so it's one home per acre up to three per lot. So you'd still have to have three acres to put three homes on it.
Or if you had ten acres, you can still do three homes.
Maybe I'm reading that in Spanish, but that is not, no comprende.
Yeah, I'm not understanding it either.
People wanna do a, a more density than they can split off their lot, get septic.
Correct.
I, I think we haven't addressed that way, I mean, we've been very.
Lenient.
Lenient on our ADUs.
Yeah, I.
So if you got two acres, two manufactured homes, one ADU.
Nope.
No way.
Nope, but how we're counting it is that you, you have your. What they're asking for makes it complicated, cause then we go, okay, I have two primary residents and I want two ADUs.
Right.
Now you have four places, so I think we leave it simple with you have one primary and one ADU.
On any lot size.
Revisit this one with the rest of our commission.
I don't think it matters any, like, cause you can have a big lot, I mean, you can, and if you're the owner, you can. So long as you meet that acre, the health code, I don't see any problem, if you have ten acres.
I agree.
You wanna put ten buildings on ten acres, you should be allowed.
The problem is your neighbor down the street, you went from one house or t- one and a half houses to now you have twenty houses.
But so long as you.
And now, who's maintaining the road?
But if you haven't divided that parcel, if you haven't divided that parcel, I own it. I mean, like, it doesn't, it's not a subdivision.
Right.
Right.
And so.
I think it causes a, a trickle effect to other things that we can't, there's no checkpoint to ensure that people have met some minimums at that point.
I don't agree. I thought the checkpoints would be water, sewer.
I mean, we can say like.
Minimum density of one acre lots, yeah, I mean, I, I don't know.
I think the appropriate way to go about it though would be to subdivide it. Right, if you've got twenty acres out back.
But if it's twenty acres, multi-use, and I want to build twenty long-term rentals. And I wanna own them all, I should be allowed.
But now you're a camp resort.
All right, if you got.
We're not camping, they're long-term.
Long-term, long-term camp resort.
If you got five acres in LaSalle, anyone bring in your house, build one for your mom and dad. Build one for your sister, brother-in-law, whatever, right, on five acres, you gotta be able to pull that off. I would think.
I can see it making issues in other departments, but, okay, I'll put it on the list.
Okay.
Okay, so just, I'm just looking at the ordinance, um, so the ordinance with regarding manufactured homes. Says only one manufactured home is allowed per designated lot, where does it say you could put an ADU in with that?
Well, the manufactured home would count as your primary residence, so if that's, is that in state code, is that in ours?
That's in our, our new code.
So you could build a slab on grade ADU. Have the manufactured home as your primary. So good catch, you could not have two, so let's look, we'll look at it.
Okay.
You can have a double wide and a single wide ADU.
Okay.
Okay.
Should we maybe move on?
I mean, it's getting late, yeah.
Like, are we, is this the best use of our time to finish going through this list?
I would like, I personally, with the attacks I have gotten, would like to get through this list so we can get it updated online. Because.
See if we agree on some more and we can.
And then, are we still holding on to the next agenda item still tonight?
Yeah.
Well, then, at some point, I mean.
Let's move quickly.
We gotta.
Tiny homes.
But no, I mean, that's not the point, we can't just rush through this, I'm not asking to rush through it.
I have to say, we've had, we've heard it tonight, that it's not available and up to date, we can pause.
But considering how long this meeting is going, I think the public can give us a, a break that we might not have gotten through all this. And it's quite frankly, too much on an agenda.
But we can just hit it, let's say we agree, we can go, if we don't, then we just, we just kick the can.
Well, that's what I'm saying, let's just kick all the rest.
All the can?
Cans.
What do you think on the next one, Ann, no, yes?
Tiny homes. I say yes.
If you have a tiny home on skids, it ought to be the same thing.
Yep, cause it's not permanently affixed to the property, just like an RV.
Sure. Do you ever permanently affix them?
Yes, so once, once a tiny home is permanently affixed, it becomes real estate property, up until that point it's personal property.
Alright.
Um, here for old. This is covered by Utah State law. And this is where there's that water, you can't move RVs and single whites and stuff from before nineteen seventy. Four, something. So that one's already covered, distinguish between modular home and mobile.
Oh my goodness, we've gone over that for years. I'm still confused and we've done it ten times, every time we look at it, I'm.
So. Factory-built housing, it's stamped in accordance with HUD, modular is. Okay, this would be your log cabin kit.
Boise Cascade House.
Yep, this would be, it's built, shipped to the site and, and laid down and you're done. Okay, so I'm gonna say that one is answering definitions.
So, just, just to reiterate, we don't have to finish this list because Kristen says she wants to.
That is true.
We.
Well, I, I see us as being very close to the end of it.
And the next agenda item?
It's gonna be a long one.
Be here for a while.
We'll be here for a while.
I just think that at some point we have to call it.
Well, what do you guys wanna do?
Yeah, let's kick it, let's look at the other one and I bet you we don't do anything on it either, so let's go.
Okay, so, let's pause, let's pause, let's pause.
If everybody agrees.
Okay. So now we are back to. Ready for us to move on, Kristen?
I am.
Okay, um. Item four, reconsideration after partial reversal and remand from administrative law judge Cresswell. Of the Love's Travel Stop proposed along Highway one ninety one within Spanish Valley. On thirteen point zero six acres as a permitted mixed use under the controlled district highway commercial zone. Um, gents?
Thank you.
Can we make a motion before?
Sure.
I'd like to motion that we postpone this item to the next commission meeting, cause it's ten PM.
Very interesting motion.
Do I hear a second?
I had to try.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Me.
Me.
Uh-oh. We need to check our bylaws on this one.
Gents, what, what happens?
Yeah, you better check your bylaws, well, the motion just fails, that's all. Cause you can't, you don't have a majority vote.
Okay, then I withdraw my motion.
Okay.
Sweet.
So we keep going?
Yeah.
Okay.
All you have to do is leave, Ann.
That's what thought has crossed my mind.
I think the thought's crossed everybody's mind at least once tonight.
Okay, well, this, this is actually a, a pretty narrow assignment. Um, and it's always difficult with this kind of assignment to. Discipline yourselves not to get out here into stuff that's not being requested at this point, remember, all the arguments and all the things related to this matter. Are still kind of pending in other parts of the process, including the lit- the litigation. This question today is from the ALJ, he wants you to make some findings. He wants you to find number one, whether the applicant is an applicant, a proper applicant, number two, if the. Proposed use is a permitted use in the zone, and then number three. If the use is in harmony with the zone and the, the surrounding area. That's how I would summarize it, so, question number one. And by the way, this report was prepared by Bart, Bart Coons, remember when Bart came a few, few weeks back? So he prepared this and I'm more or less the messenger of it. Um, so the applicant being a proper applicant, once you. Uh, sign a purchase agreement with someone to buy land, that agreement will have certain terms about. You know, uh, things that need to be done prior to the closing. And for Loves, one of the things is to get this thing zoned and ready to, you know, so they can build on it, they don't wanna buy it unless they can build on it. And so that issue has to be decided, the contract gives them the right to move forward. And the contract becomes sort of a real property right, if you look at the way it's been interpreted like legally case law. So therefore, in our opinion anyway, uh, Loves does meet the qualifications to be an applicant. So you're either a landowner or you have a property right in the land, permission from the landowner to come here and do this. Okay, so that's question number one, our position is they meet the requirement.
Is now appropriate time to ask you about that recommendation, what, what's the flip argument, why would they not be, uh?
Unappropriate applicant? Well, uh, it's all about standing, um, you know, the process here is designed. To work for people with a real interest and a stake and so forth and I, I, you know. Judge Cresswell, ALJ Cresswell, uh, he, he's, he's great and everything, he's, he's just very detailed and so this is a. This is an item that wasn't brought up at all until he brought it up and he's just that kind of a person, you know, he's looking through this and saying, well. They don't technically own the land, so are they even a real applicant? You know, now, he, he theoretically could have researched and said, okay, it's not been raised.
Sittler applied though, there's, there's a document out there that Sittler applied.
Okay.
For it, he mentions it in his last, uh.
Wish I'd brought that with me.
Okay.
Um, so I think that presented confusion.
I think the, we got more information, there's more information in this packet that shows that they actually do have a, a right to the property. I think that was just an outstanding question that's been answered.
I agree, but I think that's why they're.
He asked for that reason is what you're saying.
Yeah, cause Elise signed, uh, some kind of application, it's in here.
It's, it's also common, uh, when you go to a city or a county or whatever government organization that the record landowner as well as the. Proposed, you know, future landowner, the, the buyer, uh, they both sign the documents because, um, maybe the.
Yeah.
Governing body wants that.
Sittler's Loves application was a sketch plan titled Loves Travel Stops and Country Stores. Sittler Property Boundary Lines, Size and Location, so they're insinuated in this at an early step in the process. And then somehow over all of this time, y'all have managed to get, um. Their name out of it and now you guys are. You don't know about this part.
The, the applicant, yeah, the applicant is, uh, available to help answer these questions if you. The, the applicant, yeah, the applicant is, uh, available to help answer these questions if you deem it.
Gens, you wanna give your complete presentation first, or do you want questions asked? I mean, cause then we should get Kim up here, if.
Sure, whatever you prefer.
What, what do you guys want?
If, if we go through this and you feel like you're ready to, you know, you don't have que- you can do however you'd like.
Just go clear through it. Let's go clear through the Bart's findings.
Write your questions down, and we'll come back and ask him.
Okay.
Okay.
So number one was the issue of the applicant. Is it a proper applicant? Number two is the permitted use. Uh, is it a permitted use in the zone? And, um, you know, there's some analysis here, some uh, discussion about, you know, you, you know, the, the, the current ordinance doesn't have the specific reference to like a Loves Travel Stop or a big has references to, I believe in your last meeting, you can correct me if I'm putting words in your mouth wrong, but in your last meeting, you talked about more or less a combination of these uses is more or less the same thing. I think some of you agreed, some of you didn't. Um, and, and those two were restaurant driving caf- or driving cafe and an automobile service station. So, you know, uh, again, tonight, that's a deci- that's a finding that, that you're being asked to make. Um, alternatively, if you, you know, i- i- if you feel that it, um, is a permitted use, um, there's still another question, uh, an alternative ground for, for approval, which is, um, is it, um, in harmony with the intent of the neighborhood commercial zone? And similar in nature to the limited, to the listed permitted uses in the commercial zone. And so that's where, you know, you've gotta decide if it's, if it's in harmony. And I, I think I remember there was a lot of discussion about what does it mean to be in harmony, you know? And one thing that's pointed out here is that, uh, if this were for, if, if this application, uh, was an automobile service station or a restaurant driving cafe, it would be a specifically permitted use and, um, it would be allowed in the zone, and it would kind of de facto be harmonious, right? Because it's a permitted use. So, the idea is, um, if you had a restaurant or a gas station there, which is permitted, would a travel stop not be in harmony with that? The idea is, you know, what's gonna happen here, uh, in this zone? So that's a, I don't know, that's a brief overview. I feel like you all have studied the issue quite a bit. I don't think that you're necessarily um, i- in need of anything more from me, so to speak. So, I'm happy to answer questions. I think, you know, this, this little synopsis, this little recommendation is pretty quick and easy to read through. You also had, uh, some argument for and against from the attorneys representing each site. And if you, and again, you know, your focus tonight is to make some findings. And if, if you feel like you need to ask the applicant some questions, then that would be fine, uh, in order to make those findings. And sorry, what, sorry, Melissa, uh, if you, if you like these findings, you can adopt them by simply referring to them, you know, the findings is written in the staff report pages such and such. If you have different findings, you can make those.
So, we have to make findings in the three areas?
Yes.
Okay, and, um, and we do this via a vote?
Right, to adopt findings.
We have to adopt them.
So if you had a, yeah, if a majority of you can't adopt them, then you're gonna have to regroup and at some point.
We have to adopt all three in order for it to be.
The, the, the ALG J wants an answer to all three questions, yes.
Which the staff has done, so we can make a motion to accept the staff's findings.
Right, if you, if you feel like you wanna adopt those findings, then you could do that. That's one of the reasons for making them sort of easy for you to say, yes, we wanna adopt. But you, you know, you can, you can think it through and make, make your own findings if you'd like.
Kim, you wanna come up here and, and, and see if anybody has a question? I know I have a question for you.
Um, I'll answer Commissioner Austin's first, since you asked it. Um, I have done, um, we have six hundred and fifty travel stops nationwide, and I've done probably a hundred and fifty different contracts. And there's not one that we purchased the land before we got our approvals. Not one. Every single one was, you own it, you own it, you own it, you own it. I would like to buy some of your land, but I don't just buy it without first seeing if we could get approved. Not one, so. I think that's pretty customary in any ones. I, unless someone's really risky with their money and wanna just go take a risk and buy land without knowing what's under it, what's on it, and everything else about it. Utilities, the whole works, which again, that's why it makes it difficult, uh, to just not go down the road, not in my backyard, because you gotta find out what's there and what you could use and what's not there. So, hopefully that'll answer your question, Ms. Austin.
Yeah, and from what I could tell in the packet, the lawyers for the coalition, your lawyers, the county, nobody is arguing that Loves is not the land use applicant at this point, from what I could.
Okay.
Agreed.
At least on that, you know, on that point.
So.
He seems to be arguing that.
So, even in the information you gave us tonight, there are all sorts of numbers about how many actual parking bays there are for trucks. You know, the, the one you handed out tonight showed, I'm trying to find it, I wrote on it.
Sixty-nine.
It showed sixty-nine plus then, you know.
Yeah, and eight, and there's eighty-one car.
Fifty-three, I mean, people have been talking about.
So it's, as shown right there, without any conditional use changes. We've tried to move, again, someone said, we were right next to a house on the east side. That's not true. There are all buildings there. I've been out there. You all have been out there. There's buildings. And there is no homes directly behind that side. Uh, so it's eighty-one car. If you total them up, not ninety. There's eighty-one cars, so less cars and ten more trucks.
So, I don't agree with that statement.
Can I just say, so, I'm just, that's, this is outside of what you're assigning.
Well, I know, but, but, but it, but, but I think it's really important, Gens, because, I mean, there are all these numbers floating around, and I think it's important to.
I agree, and before, before any final plaque gets recorded or final, it's all gotta go through the approval process. So, the, the question tonight really is just not that broad, is all.
Well, it starts to talk about harmon- harmoniousness. What the, it's relevant because it has to do with whether or not it's harmonious.
If, if that, I mean, I, I, I can.
Can we take this in pieces of like, is Loves a land use applicant? Let's at least get that step voted and done.
Sure.
Is that?
And then the next step, just so that we're not doing it all at once.
Okay.
Would you agree with that, Melissa?
Oh, I'm fine with that. So does anybody wanna make a motion?
Yeah, I'll move that we adopt that Loves is a permit, or the proper applicant.
Okay, do I hear a second?
As state, as stated by the.
It's good to be real specific. You can, you can refer to as stated here, or you can make your own.
Back up the language.
Yeah, thank you.
Number one, basically.
I'm not trying to force you to take our language. I'm just saying, you can use it if you want. You can make your own if you'd like to. Okay.
Wrote it on everything under number one, correct?
The Loves is the land use applicant, and it is not exempt from the county's land use regulations under Utah Code seventeen twenty-seven A three oh four.
Okay, so, do I have a second? We have a second, right? Okay.
Yep.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, let's now move on to number two. So, Kristen, again, what page number is that?
So that is maybe four.
Thank you.
And item number two, we could break into A and B, correct, Gens?
You, you mean if it's a permitted use or if it's in harmony?
Yeah.
Right. So it, the application can be approved under either prong. But the, it, so the ALJ is asking for your findings on both questions.
Okay, so let's, let's, okay, so let's first talk about A. Let's just go.
Sure, the permitted use, okay.
So, it fits with, does it fit within the combined uses? Um, as described, restaurant or driving cafe and automobile service station?
Yeah, I mean, we chatted about that last time quite a bit.
We did. We did. We did.
But, so I think we all agreed, right? Restaurant or driving cafe, they're proposing to have a fast food thing. So we, I think we all agreed that that component was on the list, right, of permitted uses?
Right.
But then, number two, automobile service station, I think is, is where it's most, um, unclear. So I have, I do have a question for Mr. Van Dyke on this one. Does Loves consider an automobile service station and a travel center to be the same thing?
Do we view them as the same thing?
Yeah, like, Gens was saying, oh, they're pretty much the same thing.
Well, not exactly, but.
Well, no, um, our travel s- center terminology is kind of more new than what, uh, they used to use before I came on board in nineteen ninety-seven. But I think the automotive service station is, applies to truck stop, travel center, C-store, gas station. I think it applies to all of them, because automotive by definition is self-propelled with a person or property. And I think that encompasses motorhomes, to us it does. It encompasses anyone that's fueling and, uh, coming to the travel stop or to the travel center.
Because if that is the case, that you think automobile service station encompasses a travel center, then why in the application that you have with Sitla, is it specifically listed separately? It says automobile service station and travel center. In your own trucks Loves world, you distinguish them as a country store and a travel stop. So why are there two?
Termina- terminology.
What, if one encompasses the other, then you only need the one. But the fact that you, Sitla in your application, your contract with Sitla has it stated as two separate things. I don't know if I need to show where that is in the packet?
A travel center could not have gas. Is that what you're suggesting?
No, I'm saying that they're not the same thing. They're, that, the parties recognize, there's evidence that they recognize themselves that they are two separate things. Based on documents that we have in this packet. The language in the contract with Sitla talks about this applicant wanting to put a automobile service station and travel center. It's, it says that multiple times.
It doesn't show, uh, restaurants, cause most of our contracts, I may have missed that, that restaurants are also and drive-through, if you have a drive-through, are also mentioned in those contracts.
Well, in the plain language here.
Some, they do. They, they're all part of one, whether we just list it as a travel stop or a whatever, uh, if, if restaurant was not in there, they all have restaurants to some degree.
Or your packet again, sorry.
Packet, yeah. Um, so to me, that, if we're trying to decide if, you know, going back to this, I mean, we're taking out all of the emotional opinions about this truck stop at this point. We're just focused on whether or not it's a permitted use based on the two thousand and eleven ordinance. Um, restaurant or driving cafe is on the list, automobile service station is on the list, but travel center is not on the list. And based on evidence in here, travel center is distinctly mentioned separately from an automobile service station. So, to me, that, you know, it's a stretch for a reasonable person to say that a travel center is the same thing as an automobile service station.
Would a truck stop be something entirely different?
What do you mean?
I mean, I, I feel like we can use different words, you know, to describe a thing, but things still the same thing.
But in two thousand and eleven, when they wrote that ordinance, and they wrote automobile, bill service station, they weren't, I think it's reasonable to say that they weren't talking about a truck stop. Because if they were, they would have written truck stop.
It could possibly fall under that accessory buildings uses.
Not, because accessory.
Uses would be a travel center.
But it's, it's not as, you know, that's, accessory use is a small use. It's not like a main building. It's not a large dominant. It's accessory to the business, but not the main.
Well, what would be the main point of this business then?
The travel center building is a dominant, large building at a truck stop. Like, if you had a little storage shed, that's an accessory use.
If you remember the last time we talked about this, your findings were that certain things are allowed in these two permitted uses. And so, if they are allowed, combining them is.
So, but all we're combining here is a restaurant or an automobile service station. An automobile service station, I'm arguing, is distinct from a travel center.
I mean, you, uh, yeah, you can, but, there's logic to that. I'm just saying that the, the, the use is allowed if they're combined.
Yes.
Is what you pick, is what you talked about last time.
Yeah, so if you wanna do a, a gas station, an automobile service station, by definition as not a truck stop, um, and a restaurant or drive-in, then that would be permitted.
So, I liked how Judge Cresswell put this, and I finally found it. Thank you for letting me borrow your packet. He says, decades earlier, automobile service stations provided a narrow or select range of services to those traveling on streets, roads, highways and freeways. Over the years, the needs of those who travel have changed. The number and types of motor vehicles have increased and diversified. Besides passenger vehicles, travelers may travel on the streets or roads, on electric vehicles, street legal ATVs, motorcycles, commercial and heavy vehicles, passenger cars, light trucks, vans, and recreational vehicles. We've also become a convenience culture, which means we prefer to purchase our needs at a single location, rather than at several retail stores. The result is that in automobile service stations have changed their services and support for the traveling customer.
Right, but the two thousand and eleven ordinance does not change in the way that Cresswell is changing the needs of people today. So, based on the two thousand and eleven ordinance, as it was intended to be interpreted, is how we have to look at it. Yes, I acknowledge that is very much true, but I'm sorry. We're basing this off of the old San Juan County two thousand and eleven ordinance, where the language is sub, you know, is not adequate for us to start to, you know, look at it as, from a lens of like, oh, yeah, but it's twenty twenty-five now. And this old ordinance, we can just make it up, we can just make it, you know, match what we want today. You know, we, I just, I don't think, it's too much of a, um, creative maneuver to reinterpret the two thousand and eleven ordinance in the way that Cresswell did there by saying that, you know, we have evolved. Well, the county should have evolved from that ordinance.
Yeah.
To allow for a travel stop.
And I think that's our job, right, is to help the county evolve. And we're trying to do that with a, a new ordinance that has better language around it. But dealing with the old one, I think it's reasonable, like, thinking back to twenty eleven, man, I, I guess when I was growing up, we had Trailside here in Monticello, right? And those needs have changed, and Trailside's no more, and Old Woody's is no more, and now we have a Maverick, and now we're talking about a Loves, cause I, I feel like these businesses are changing over time to support the needs of our.
Right, and it's not our fault that the county did not update this ordinance.
Well.
But I would, but I would argue that it's, I just disagree. That I, I feel like, just like it says here, those are permitted. It's permitted for the reasons listed here. I mean, I just don't, I just fundamentally disagree that that the uses, you had it pulled up a minute ago, are automotive excel ser- accessories, um, okay, where are we at? Automobile service station, I believe it's that. Auto accessories, I believe it's that. Restaurant and drive-in. And so, we go back to Bart's summary, and I.
And that's exactly why I feel like it fits those things in the two thousand and eleven ordinance. And I think, cause it's a commercial um, district, uh, con- controlled district highway, it is in harmony. And, and I always have the hard time, and I, and I'm sorry, I'll just, I'll just say it. But those commercial areas, you are allowed, you have the right to build a home. You have a right to build a residence. But it's still a commercial area, and those other things are permitted in that area. You building your home, doing a residence, doesn't take away those, those rights that are given under that zoning to you as a landowner. And so I don't know, we probably won't get anywhere on it, but I'll make a motion, we accept the findings.
Well, no, no, just a second, I still have, I still wanted to say something about it.
Okay, you can.
Uh, to Ann's point, I mean, one of the things we decided at the last meeting was that the two thousand and eleven ordinance applied. Not the two thousand and nineteen, which actually did have truck stop mentioned, right?
Uh, did the truck, is truck stop in two thousand and nineteen?
Because no truck stop could be built north of the Kins Lake Road or whatever.
So in, in a way that it prohibited it, in other words?
Yeah, that.
Yeah, okay. I thought you were saying that it allowed it.
Yeah, no, so we, so, so, so there was truck stop in two thousand and nineteen, but we went with what was in two thousand and eleven. We didn't go with what was in two thousand and nineteen. So, so that's one point. The second point, and you know, we've all said this, our bit, we said it however many months ago. Um, you know, I don't think a truck stop is the same thing as an automobile service station. You know, people aren't sleeping in sixty-nine trucks, you know, parked trucks all night long at an automobile service station. So I, you know, I'm, I'm with, I go with that ombudsman's, um, you know, um, opinion that we were given and given again this time around, that it's just a different, I don't, it's a different beast.
One thing to point out about the ombudsman's decision is
Yeah.
that, that code didn't involve any permitted uses or the rest, or the option to approve it based on harmony. It was all conditional uses.
No, what, you know, I, I looked at that, Jen's, because I had read that, then I went back and looked at the actual opinion, and it said they were allowed the uses.
Well, it, it, okay, I'm just, i- if you look at the opinion, the, the author said that the planning and zoning folks said, look, if you've got, if this is permitted, and this is permitted, and this is permitted, and they could be built one after another after another, just next to each other, why not a combination? That was the rationale of that group. And then the decision maker, the ombudsman's office says, no, you can't do that. And, and you know, that's a respectable position, it has logic to it and so on and so forth, but that that's their opinion. Ombudsman's office, office is not a district court or appellate court. And
But it's a valid opinion.
I'm, I'm just saying that you're not held to that. So if, if you felt like, well, they could have built a gas station, and then, so what, why not do the combination? You would be within your discretion to do that. Anyway, but.
They could do two truck stops by that logic.
Well, anything that's permitted in the zone, they could do, right?
So, well, I think, I think we should just do you all mind if I just read that ombud- the ombudsman's?
Please.
I haven't read it. I totally disagree with it. I'll just say that.
A truck stop is a different and distinct use and not just a group of component parts. A truck stop is commonly understood to be a business catering to larger tractor-trailer rigs in addition to automobile traffic. In general, a truck stop requires a large parcel and large buildings. They also alter traffic patterns because they are intended to attract commercial trucking traffic. Accommodations for the larger tractor, tractor-trailers is a unique impact of a truck stop, and so it is more than just a supersized gas station. A truck stop is a distinct land use with significantly different impacts than those associated with the component parts. Um, I mean, I think that's really, really great argument for how it is different. Um, and does not match the two thousand intent that I read of the two thousand and eleven ordinance for what is a permitted use. There are a lot of definitions that the lawyers are arguing about, what is an automobile, what is an automobile service station, what is neighborhood, et cetera. Um, you know, there was one that was just trying to define automobile, but really that's irrelevant because the term we're looking at is automobile service station. Um, the proposed ordinance has a definition of, uh, wait, yeah, of a truck stop. Um, and it does not reference automobiles at all, so that, there's, there's another, like, that doesn't add up. Why are we stretching this definition of an automobile service station is the same thing as a truck stop when even in our proposed ordinance does not even reference automobiles? It references tractor-trailers, you know, bigger, larger things. So, like, there's evidence that we even in two thousand and twenty-five are not recognizing a truck stop as being a, an automobile service station. Um, the proposed use table has automobile station language that references repair and, um, not a junkyard. So it characterizes automobile station again differently from a truck stop, so.
See, but, but automobiles are not precluded from truck stops, right? You can, they sell gasoline and you can take your car in there and go get gas. Serv- automobile service station, right, according to, to the ALJ here, business which sells gasoline or other motor fuel, lubricating oil and greases, roadside electric car charging, or similar services for motor, motor vehicles, which also provides minor repair and maintenance for motor vehicles and electric vehicles, which may provide motor vehicle and electric vehicle washing services and may, which may include a convenience store, mini-market, and which may include public parking, right?
Right.
So, I mean, again, just, this is just my thinking here, just because we call it a truck stop, doesn't mean it's just for trucks. Right? Automobiles can go there, and same thing with automobile service station. Doesn't mean they only work on, you know, your little hatchback that I love. But they'll also take, you know, semis.
An automobile service station?
Yeah.
So then what is your definition of automobile service station?
Man, I'm just a simple guy from LaSalle. I use all these things interchangeably.
I don't see a tractor trailer pulling up to a Maverick, which I would consider an automobile service station getting serviced by any mechanic. I mean, there's not even a mechanic.
No, not a Maverick.
I mean, even at a travel stop, who, who, when was the last time? I know you have, so had your car repaired at a truck stop by a mechanic?
I have.
I have a time or two on vacation when it wasn't going well.
I just, I don't, I don't see that as a.
Thanks for bringing that up.
Um.
I think to, to TC's point earlier about maybe some new social views of what a truck stop is or an automobile service station. I mean, two thousand and eleven was not that long ago. And I think of Green, I think of Green River.
Fourteen years.
The exact same services are provided. So I think during a ten-year gap isn't, it's not enough for me to, to say that it has totally changed the way we
Well, if that's the case, then we should just keep the two thousand and eleven ordinance for the county, if it's that valid. I mean, why are we even working on a new ordinance? Two thousand and eleven seems just as reasonable, right?
We can talk about it later.
So, I mean, you know, it just doesn't, I think, trying to stretch the two thousand and eleven to match two thousand and twenty-five and stretching it to, an automobile service station to be a travel center is just by very definition, I mean, in, in these documents, they call them two different things. They, they do not call them together.
And I think that normal person out there in the market traveling, they can use any one of the different terminologies, and you said you wouldn't, a truck wouldn't pull in to get fuel at Maverick. Yes, they do, and Hopper, they have it right now, and I think this.
Well, they definitely get fueled.
They could fuel up there and.
But is there a mechanic coming out of the Maverick to go help?
That's a C-store, but yet the trucks are allowed to do it. And then I think you were feeling like, at a truck stop, they only fuel trucks. That's not true, just like the reverses.
It's been litigated for six years, and I think even how Mavericks changed. Mavericks changed in just the last few years, for good, bad, or bitter. They're all huge now. I mean, they, those ones that Hopper, the one they did, South Price, they're, they're monstrous, which I mean, that's just kind of, I mean, I, regardless of, not even talking about that, it's just a change in how people purchase their fuel. They're busy, they're huge, they're kind of one-stop compared to I mean, I'd hate to compete against them. I mean, they're and it's kind of sad, I think, that the little mom and pops things go away, but, but they've, you can tell the business is changing just in the last six years of litigation.
Can we agree, though, that a travel center is not the same thing as an automobile service station?
No.
Well, Jen's, pardon me if I'm wrong, we need to be in the, unfortunately, due to the point of application, we need to be thinking as two thousand and eleven. We, we can't do a switcheroo because it was at the time. And so we need to have that mindset that at the time, do we think automobile service station, at the time, do we think they had it covered or not?
And that's why I'm arguing no.
No.
And I think there's evidence to show that even the stakeholders don't see them as the same thing, because they literally wrote them as two different terms, automobile service station and travel center, separate.
Well, so to answer your question, legally, um, this group has a fair amount of flexibility. And if you exceed your flexibility, I'm sure the court will tell you so. Uh, y- you know, it's, it's, it's your call. You're the ones being asked to interpret the two thousand and eleven statute. And so, uh, y- you know, like I said.
Can we go back to the language?
I would say not really. I thought, I mean.
So what if we could agree that it is not a permitted use because automobile service station is not the same thing as a travel center, then, just hypothetically, then where would we go?
Well, maybe that's a good point, maybe, because it can be approved under either prong. So if you're at a little bit of a stalemate on the, whether or not it's a permitted use, why not just go look at whether it's harmonious, and if you find that it's, that it is, then it doesn't matter that it's not a permitted use because it's harmonious, it can be approved through that prong. Right? So maybe you can, eh, I'm, I'm just saying, you could leave this question, go to the next one and see where you come out, and you may not need to go back to the other one. Whatever you want to do, it's your show.
Do you want to move on to B? Do you want to?
Well, I, it sounds like, it, it sounds like we're, I mean, we're two-two, it sounds like, on, on A.
Yeah. I think that's how it was last time, right, when we did?
Well, yeah.
Might have been three-three then. What's that? Might have been three-three then.
No, oh, no, I think Anna and I were the only ones who voted against it. Um, so let's go, let's go on, and let's talk about B, is it harmonious?
Can we look at the language in two thousand and eleven? Yeah, there you go, thank you.
So this is where lay of the land is important. Who is adjacent to this property and what are they doing in those buildings? Well, we know on the north side, I guess, wouldn't it be?
You click back on the Google Maps, Kristen.
Well, but I'm not sure, I'm not sure we can go that route because the whole, so basically, from the highway to the ditch
Yep.
is a thousand feet. And in the, as of the two thousand and eleven, that we had that just highway commercial snake. It wasn't the best zoning, but it was. And so basically you have between the road and the ditch was all designated as highway.
Yeah, so, but to my point is, what are they doing in, in the adjacent properties?
Well, I think, I think what she's, no, I think what she's saying is, when you look at har- harmonious, you have a number of permitted uses in a commercial zone. And so, um, at least it's my opinion that any permitted use would be in harmony with another permitted use. In other words, if you had a zone that had four of one type of permitted use, but none of the others, and one of the others came along, and you thought it didn't meet a permitted use, but your question about har- harmony, you know, you can't just exclude something um, because it hasn't been built yet, so to speak, is, is my, is my opinion on how that, the intent of that statute. So, see what I'm saying? Cause it's just not built out.
I'm looking at, I'm looking at the two thousand and eleven ordinance and how it defines harmonious. And it's not what the other permitted uses are, it's what the actual uses are. So.
Well, there couldn't be any uses in the zone that aren't permitted, you know what I mean?
Well, but there are. I mean, that's what people have come and been talking to us about, right?
Well, I guess what I'm trying to say is, you have an area that's undeveloped, right? And across the street in a residential zone, you have houses and other things. They're not in, they're not in the commercial, anyway, that, you see what I'm saying? You've got this area that's undeveloped. No, I'm not sa- I'm not saying that. I'm not saying that. I'm not saying you don't count. I'm just saying that you have an area that's undeveloped, and so permitted uses in that area, I mean, they kind of have to be harmonious with other permitted uses.
But that's not, that's not what the two thousand and eleven zoning ordinance says.
Can you read what is on?
Okay, I'm on number two on page twenty-seven.
Oh, I saw it.
The, the proposed use. Okay, so that the proposed use, it's two parts. That the proposed use will comply with intent, spirit, regulations, and conditions specified in this ordinance for such use, and the zoning district where the use is to be located, as well as make the use harmonious with the neighboring uses in the zoning district. So if there are, I, I understand you're saying those are other neighboring permitted uses. But if there are other uses, it doesn't say permitted uses, it just says neighboring uses.
I think what I'm saying is, let's, let's assume someone was here with a a type of a gas station that you all felt was a permitted use. Actually, let's not say that. Let's say you felt like it wasn't necessarily a permitted use, but you're wondering if it was harmonious.
Okay.
Uh, I, all I'm saying is if, if something's similar to what's exactly permitted, it would have to more or less be harmonious, right? That's all I'm trying to say. So, you know, uh, a, a travel center, you, you might, you might say that you don't believe, oh, it's fifty-fifty right now whether it's a permitted use, but is a travel center harmonious to a gas station, to a drive-through restaurant? That's, to me, I'm saying that's the way to look at this harmonious question.
Right.
I'm reading number two differently as like, I'm, I'm taking the neighbors out of it and just doing zone blocks.
Well, yeah, but it just says neighboring uses. It's saying what's there right now.
And what I, what I mean by that is, I mean, if, if a permitted use came in, let's just say a, a a, a gas station that was a permitted use, you all thought is a permitted use.
Yeah.
If the neighbors felt like it was not a good thing because it had, you know, maybe it was dangerous, or it was loud, or it was lighted, you know, so on and so forth, then my opinion is you couldn't say it was not harmonious because it's different than the houses around it. It would have to be par- harmonious because it's, it's more or less a permitted use. It's like the other permitted uses.
Yeah, you and I are saying the exact same, I mean, you're saying that we're just.
I've never learned to, I've never learned to express myself very well.
Kristen, what you just highlighted is relevant to this argument of understanding what the meaning.
The purpose of a controlled district.
To provide inappropriate locations. A district where agriculture, industrial, commercial, and residential uses may exist in harmony based on planned development for mutual benefit and flexible location of uses. So it does address the residences next to it.
What'd you say, Ellen?
So, the purpose of the controlled district CD is to provide inappropriate locations. A district where agriculture, industrial, commercial, and residential uses may exist in harmony based on planned development for mutual benefit and flexible location of uses. So this is the, so it is valid to factor in those nearby residences, neighboring. Um, you know, is it harmonious with the neighboring residential? And, and, you know, does everybody agree with that? I mean, based on that reading of our ordinance? Does everybody agree with that? I mean, based on that reading of our ordinance, or is there some other creative interpretation? That's what I wanted to argue, but.
Let's have a look at the map.
So, yeah, look, let's. And I, I just wanna say, count. I think it's important to think about how many people are sleeping next door to this. Literally, right next door, not over, you know.
So it's here.
A street or two. Properties that above the.
Commercial, so to answer Anne's question, how many people are sleeping next to it?
Well, we know the guy in the first lot is, we know there's a guy in a trailer in the very first lot, so there's a main house in a trailer. On the cor- corner by the street.
This is a business.
But does anybody's live there full time? In that storage, the RV storage place, somebody lives there, okay, they're sleeping, then we got Marlene, no. Then we got Marlene.
Which is forty eight sixty five.
There's somebody else between that storage and Marlene, Marlene's got the solar panels. Um, but we know somebody's living in that lot, cause they. They, they reached out to. And then if you go down the east side of it, those are all short-term rentals in that one. In one of those buildings, that first top building, that's all renovated.
This is Viscaia.
Yeah, short-term rentals, people sleep in there. Um, I don't know about some of these other ones, but we know there's people in the business park, right there.
There are families in the homes on, on, uh.
There's not people sleeping in the business park.
There absolutely is.
In the storage shed?
Because I'm not sure how legal it is, yes, there are people sleeping in these garages.
Well, so I guess where I'm going with this, is this the kind of harmony the county wants to create for its residents? Is having them subjected to all of the hazards, what did he say? It's unique impacts.
What is your height on your building?
I mean, so it's less than those.
It is less than this.
It's also less than the U-Haul place that we just approved.
What is the height have, what's the height implication?
I'm just saying, when you're thinking of like, scale of driving down the road, I just want you to look at how big these buildings are.
I think people are way less concerned about the height of these buildings and then the, the pollution, the diesel.
Okay, you were just headed down the Harmony Route, I was just trying to provide some information.
But what I'm saying is like, the county's gonna have a bunch of sick people on their hands, that putting, making us live next to that.
So we're talking about next door neighbors, right, in this conversation, and I'm just looking at this site map that was provided to us tonight. Right, and I think we're in agreement that, 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 the next door neighbors are all to the north, right, that are physically the closest.
But at all of those other places people can live in, people can sleep in these things if they chose to, and some people already are. So they are homes as well, they're like multi-use buildings.
Another highway commercial.
No, but I mean, in, not in the technical sense of multi-use, but people are using them for businesses and, um, residences. You don't think so?
No, I, I don't know, maybe.
Well, that's what I'm saying is that people need to know how many people are living here, so not to mention the, right. Next door neighbors.
Okay, guys, let's, let's, let's figure out how we want to do this. So we've got, so, so we've got a. We need to, we need to take a, we need to address, can you go up a little more, Kristen? A little bit more, we need to address item two, um, so, does anybody want to make a motion on A?
Cause this isn't either or, you can either. If A or B has findings, we move, we move forward, or neither has findings, we don't.
Hey, anybody want to make a motion?
I make a motion, we adjourn.
I make a motion, are you ser- is that a serious? Well, I'll make a motion that, like a serious motion, I'm about to make a serious motion. But I guess it was serious, so we should.
I mean, it, it's up to you guys, I just, I feel like we know where we're at, we knew where we were at an hour ago.
But, so I have a motion that maybe y'all would entertain.
Sure.
Um, that it's not a permitted use, it's not in harmony, it needs a conditional use.
And can you define what you mean by that?
Um, it's, okay, so it's not a permitted use because an automobile service station is not. Uh, the same thing as a truck stop or a travel center, as demonstrated by the applicant's own language. In their application, um, and that it's also, well, just based on that alone, you could say. It needs to have a condition, if they wanted to go through with it, then they could come and, uh, apply for a conditional use. Because ultimately. If the county wants to do right by Spanish Valley, the least they can do is enforce. A wider buffer zone and other mitigating, um, things, I know SITL is gonna. It says in your contract that SITL is gonna have you follow their dark sky ordinance and sign requirements. However, our planning commission is about to get rid of the Spanish Valley ordinance, so I don't know what the implications there are. But if there is any kind of binding SITL, that SITL is having loves. You know, follow their community structure plan, then that is one safeguard, but. We have lost the, you know, buffer zone, they're offering what, twenty feet is what your plan has in a seven foot wall?
You missed my whole point, early on, is all the trucks were right on, and I even at one of the meetings. When there was no wall, I said, we'll put up a six foot wall, eight foot wall, we finally agreed on an eight foot wall between us and the residential area. Again, we're having retail businesses ask for us to please build the road to their new facilities. And the storage shed, which I can't believe people would be allowed to sleep in a hundred and twenty degrees storage shed, but to answer your question. We've already gone that buffer zone, meaning just the easement between us, now there's a wall, and then. Where trucks were, they've been moved over three hundred feet to the south.
I, yeah, I know, but did you know that there were people still sleeping in those units? That's what I'm saying is that.
And all of our trucks are along those white.
Well, I don't think the county is gonna go kick those people out.
Are you making a motion, you're making a motion.
So, thank you for explaining it, do I hear a second for Anne's motion? Okay, motion fails for lack of a second, anybody else have a motion?
What happened to Cody's?
I, I'll still keep my motion out there, if nobody wants to, they don't.
So if you, if you do adjourn, you, you need to address this by saying we're gonna postpone it till the next meeting at least, and then you can adjourn if that's what you're wanting to do.
Well, I, I just feel like if we vote.
Well, we need it on the record.
That it's a stillmate, that it's two, two?
Well, you can, you can go through the process of vote if you'd like and come to that, if that's what you want to do. Or you can move it to the next meeting and adjourn, but you have to do a motion one way or another.
I just have a, I don't know. We have.
I move that we table the remainder of this discussion until next month.
Do I have a second?
Sure, I'll second it.
All in favor, say aye.
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 So, um, now do we have a motion to adjourn?
Sure, I'll make a motion, we adjourn.
Okay, do I have a second? Uh, no, we'll, we'll do this next week, we'll do this next month.
Well, I guess more for your information.
Yeah, yeah, we'll just do this next month.
I'll second Cody's motion.
Okay, all in favor?
This might be the record.
I know, right?
No, it isn't.
It's not? Swear.
Thank you.
Nope, I got you, I mean, like I said, I, I like the discussions, I just.